This investment means we're celebrating more today than just this terminal. But more jobs, more visitors, more chances to show that here in LA, we get the job done.
The new connector is part of a $15 billion makeover that is being done at LAX, the nation's third busiest airport. At LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Officials say the Terminal 4 Connector is a significant milestone in creating post-security connections between all LAX terminals. While heading now to Cal State Northridge where students are the first to take part in an increasingly popular metro program that offers discount rates on metro rides. Gil Reyes has the details.
CSUN student Justin Kabanting saves time and gas money by using his Metro U-Pass instead of driving.
A great alternative to driving by myself because it's an easy way to get around the traffic and also being able to get to class on time.
The Universal College Student Fair Pass offers discount metro rates for CSUN students with eight units or more. A sticker with an electronic chip goes on student IDs. Simply swipe IDs like tap cards to go anywhere metro goes. Stickers for CSUN students cost $95 per semester. No more driving to campus, paying for parking, or trying to find a space.
And we all know what it's like to go to school and see all these cars suddenly descend, single passenger cars that make it difficult for the neighbors, make it tough for the students. That's why public transportation makes so much sense.
The two-year-old pilot program has become increasingly popular, recently signing up its 1,500th pass holder. Councilmember Paul Krikorian says it's a far different San Fernando Valley than when he was in school.
But I can tell you, when I was growing up here, this was hot rod culture territory. This was the place where people were committed to their cars. But we have changed that dramatically. When you look at the success of the orange line, when you look at the success of the red line, it's clear that the San Fernando Valley wants transit. The San Fernando Valley will use transit. And the generation of people going to this university, many of them may never own a car.
Definitely, I would say, take advantage of the U-Pass because it is definitely something that is slowly gaining momentum and it's only going to get better as long as we continue to support.
Reporting from CSUN, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
LA Trade Tech and Pasadena City College are among several other campuses participating. Get your pass by logging on to metro.net and typing "U-Pass" in the search. While over in Hollywood, residents want change, but not too much. They voiced their concerns during a recent get-together with Councilmember Mitchell Farrell as they tried to tackle some hot-button issues. Anna Marcos has more.
Want to know your city leader better and ask what he's up to in your neighborhood? Some Hollywood residents do. The United Hollywood Neighborhood Council is holding a series of conversations with its leaders. And today, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell is on the hot seat. Tops on the agenda, two initiatives to help regulate costume characters on Hollywood Boulevard and the Hollywood tour buses.
We're restricting where they can park day in and day out along the Boulevard. They load people in these buses, they sit in the sun for hours sometimes, they don't give them refunds. And then they go in these chop tops into the hills. And I don't want to wait until a bad tragedy occurs.
Another hot topic for residents: development. Many feel planned mega projects like a new Target store and a Millennium project near Capitol Records will ruin Tinseltown's character.
What is your position on spot-up zoning for projects such as the Target building and the proposed Millennium project which are out of scale to their neighborhoods?
I would argue that Hollywood doesn't need to go anywhere near the height of downtown Los Angeles ever. Hollywood is its own neighborhood with its own character. It will change. One thing that I know for sure is we need economic development and investment in quality projects.
Residents also want to know what the city's doing about affordability and housing.
Are there other plans to provide housing for seniors, low-income residents, and the Hollywood workforce?
Great question about the number-one crisis facing the city. We are pricing Angelinos out of being able to live in Los Angeles.
O'Farrell says he's got seven initiatives pending in city council on affordable housing and several affordable housing projects about to come online.
He's obviously gotten very involved in Hollywood, has been for a long time. And I think that he was very forthcoming in his answers.
Even on the controversial stuff, whether it be Integrity Initiative or Millennium, you know, we may not agree, but at least I get a sense of who he is and why he thinks the way he does.
Traffic, homelessness, jobs, the list is long. Residents say they may not always see eye-to-eye with O'Farrell, but at least they know they've got his ear at City Hall. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Councilmember David Rue has also been a former guest at the Conversation Series. Well, how does a free computer sound to you? Well, your neighborhood could be next in line to benefit from an innovative recycling program started by the agency that oversees this station. Gil Reyes has details from Van Nuys.
Nice to meet you. Congratulations. Good to see you.
Van Nuys Councilmember Nuri Martinez hands out free refurbished computers to about 100 local families at the YMCA.
You know, the Y has done an amazing job in terms of programming and providing services for our young people. But the technology piece is what's missing. A lot of our families just can't afford a computer at home or can't afford the internet. Nice to meet you. Very nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
But today, families in need are getting up to speed. They'll be receiving free refurbished computers and a separate hotspot device which comes with four years of free internet. All sponsored by the YMCA. It's all part of the city's "Our Cycle" LA program. It takes outdated City Department computers and fixes them for families in need. The idea comes from the city's Information Technology Agency, or ITA, the agency that oversees LA This Week and Channel 35.
Anytime that you're giving a family, with children especially, an opportunity to get connected, to get online, to get homework done, to learn great things, it's always special, it's always unique. There's so many different great communities in LA, and it's our pleasure to be able to help.
They mentioned you can do computer programming, like coding, and that's something I've actually really been interested in. And it'll be a lot easier now with a computer at home.
Hi, Ron. Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming. Hi. You're very welcome.
Councilmember Martinez calls the giveaway an investment in solving problems in her district like homelessness.
We need our generation to be informed, knowledgeable, and have a good education to come back to communities like Van Nuys and help us fix, you know, some of these issues. Today, I want them to take away the message of, today we gave you a computer, somebody took a chance on you, please pay it forward moving on and come back to communities like Van Nuys and help it make it better.
In Van Nuys, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
City leaders plan to hand out more free refurbished computers to other communities throughout LA. Low-income families in Baldwin Village, Koreatown, various public housing units, and senior centers, San Pedro and South Central LA have also benefited. In Panorama City, a group of new firefighters are ready to save lives as they join the elite team of the LAFD. They showed off their skills and celebrated at a recent graduation ceremony. Rasha Goel has more.
The age of 12 was my first introduction to the fire department. And it was actually my mom calling 911 for the first reason, or the first time. And she actually had a heart attack and because of the work of the Los Angeles City Fire Department, she's still alive.
Luis Milroy, who as a young boy knew he wanted to become a firefighter with the Los Angeles Fire Department, was also recognized with the top overall recruit award at the ceremony. And for his mom, it's a moment she won't forget.
It's unbelievable to me that here we are, you know? It's the dream come true.
Forty-nine recruits joined the Los Angeles Fire Department after a 20-week rigorous training curriculum. And today, they join together to celebrate their accomplishments.
But getting here has also been a lot of hard work and determination for the recruits.
We cover so many different things. It's hose line operations, our ladder operations, emergency medical technician review, hazardous materials, urban search and rescue. The list of things that we cover is very extensive and very difficult.
Everything was pretty challenging, physically, mentally. We'd be here for 10 hours a day in the sun, working hard. We'd work out in the morning and then come and do skills evolutions in the afternoon. And then there's studying when we go home at night.
In this year's batch, five recruits were between the ages of 18 to 22. Forty-one recruits were between 23 to 32 years old, and three recruits were between 33 to 37 years old. Among them are two Marines and one National Guardsman.
And after years of having no graduates, I'm so proud. While I've been mayor, this is the eighth class of firefighter recruits that we will graduate. It is important for us to have firefighters and to support them.
As the hats come off and the gear comes on, now is when the real work of putting out fires begins. In Panorama City, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Well, from a graduation ceremony to an awards ceremony honoring some of LAFD's finest. And here's something interesting. Many of the department's top awards for excellence this year don't involve fighting fires, but they do involve bravery. Gil Reyes shows us.
LAFD engineer Darren Lair receives the department's highest honor, the Medal of Valor, for swift action in the pounding surf off the coast of Kauai, Hawaii last year while on vacation.
A young lady got swept off into the water, and I basically brought her out of the water, rescued her, and that's why I'm here today.
A packed house here at the Westin Bonaventure Hotel for the Los Angeles Fire Foundation's awards ceremony. Twelve LA City Fire Department personnel are being honored for going above and beyond the call of duty. Three dogs are being recognized as well.
Congratulations to members of the human remains detection team. Their keen sense of smell helped locate four missing bodies hidden beneath debris from a structure fire in the Westlake District in June.
As a human remains handler, it's kind of that balance you walk between being proud of the work your dog has done, but also knowing that that means they've found someone who's lost their life. But we take, we take pride in knowing that we've helped get some closure for that family.
Another awardee, engineer Tyler Varnum, took over the wheel of an out-of-control fire engine when the driver fell ill and passed out.
It was a moving vehicle, yes. We were driving emergency to a call, and we hit a few things going emergency, and I was able to get up to the front seat and get that rig to stop.
Proceeds from the awards luncheon go to the LAFD.
We hope that this will yield some revenue that we can spend on equipment, technology, training, and youth programs for the fire department.
We have four firefighter magnet high schools now. So it buys equipment for those kids to learn how to become a firefighter.
So God bless our Los Angeles Fire Department, each and every one of you who has answered the call.
Going above and beyond. From the Westin Bonaventure Hotel in downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Lifetime Achievement Award is also given to retired Assistant Chief Frank Borden. Borden is the father of community SERC teams which have expanded nationwide. Well, free activities and food for young people and their families, job opportunities for local residents, and a safe place for Angelinos of all ages to spend Friday evenings. Rasha Goel has more on a program being kicked off at the Normandy Recreation Center.
Mayor Eric Garcetti recently kicked off Fall Friday Nights, a program to keep parks and recreation centers across the city open late with special activities for young people and families.
We're creating safe places for young people to be in. And this is the second year that we've taken our summer programs and pushed them into the fall for Fall Friday Nights.
We've extended the hours and added a lot of additional family programming and youth programming. And it's really just to get our youth and families engaged in our parks later into the evening on the weekends.
Fall Friday Nights is an extension of Summer Night Lights, a signature mayor's office initiative that just concluded its ninth year. It all started in response to a tragic shooting near a closed public park.
This began in Glassell Park, in a single park. When there was tragedy and we lost a young woman, a teenage girl who was walking with her boyfriend and who's no longer with us because we had a park that was closed a block and a half away where they could have been safe. So we started a program that summer called "At the Park After Dark." And then with Mayor Villarreal, we grew that to eight parks, and then 16 and 32 parks. And as mayor, this has been a core part of my work as well.
The program runs from September 23rd to November 10th from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at night.
It's a lot of crafts, a lot of programs, sports, different leagues, activities, things like that, that, you know, kids of all ages and families could come out and participate on a Friday night.
It also helps build a relationship between the LAPD and community.
That's really what our goal is for this community, is to make it where everyone feels that they're safe and can get together as families and bring the children out and have fun activities.
More information on Fall Friday Nights locations can be found at empowerla.org. A fun way to also get involved with your local community and give back. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
According to officials, in 2015, 20 of 32 communities surrounding Summer Night Light sites saw a reduction or no change in gang-related crime. While the city of LA welcomes a delegation from South Korea, a call for artists to create a new art project in Little Armenia, and an upgraded baseball field at the Toblerone Recreation Center is a home run for local kids. All these stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti and Council District 4 Councilmember David Rue attended a luncheon for Mayor Byung-soo Sa of Busan, South Korea, hosted by sister cities of Los Angeles. Councilmember Rue says these kinds of visits help foster and strengthen relations between the two countries.
And our strength comes from learning from each other's and from each other's differences.
LA City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell and the Department of Cultural Affairs are calling for artists to create a public art project at this corner of Hollywood and the 101 Freeway that will serve as the official gateway to Little Armenia, similar to this rendering of a gateway marker planned in Koreatown. The gateway will serve to acknowledge the contributions of one of the largest Armenian populations in the country. The budget for this project is $350,000, of which the selected artist will receive a stipend. For info on submissions, call 213-473-7013.
It's also an opportunity to beautify the area and highlight its significance at the same time.
The Department of Rec and Parks and Councilmember Gil Sadio recently celebrated improvements to the baseball diamond at the Toblerone Recreation Center. Improvements include a new backstop and an upgrade to the infield dirt mix. A new batting cage was also installed for baseball team training and practice sessions. The upgrades were made possible through a grant which will also allow the Recreation Center to offer reduced registration rates in an effort to get more kids involved in sports in one of the city's lower-income areas.
I'm actually glad it did happen because we were, we were kind of in the need for a batting cage.
Have them come and practice, have them come and be responsible players, which will then turn them into responsible students, hopefully. Teach them about winning, losing, sportsmanship.
Well, turning 90 can be loads of fun if you're celebrating at the Griffith Park Boys Camp. Now, the camp program, run by the Department of Recreation and Parks, marked its 90th birthday with a free open house for all the kids. Anna Marcos takes us to all the fun.
Zip lining anyone? This was a chance to test your grit while getting some fresh air and a taste of nature. The Griffith Park Boys Camp threw a free family fun day for the kids to celebrate the 90 candles on its birthday cake.
This is a gem, a gem in our city, in the urban city, where many kids don't get exposed to the environment, get exposed to the wilderness, to know about their environment, and it's very important.
Since the 20s, the camp has been introducing Angelino children to the great outdoors. Here, they learn to build new skills, become team players, and meet other kids from all walks of life. For many of the children, according to camp supervisors, the experiences have been life-changing.
It was the first time they may have saw a deer, may have shot their first arrow.
When you were here as campers, you were all just campers. There was really no rich or poor, everybody was just a camper with a sleeping bag in the bunk.
Smokey Bear even stopped by for the party, while the kids learned to hit bull's eyes and test new rock climbing skills. All in all, a good time in the wild before heading back to LA's own urban wilderness. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Now, although the Griffith Park Boys Camp is primarily for boys, there's also a girls' camp called Camp Hollywood Land. Well, for more information on camp programs, call 323-664-0571. Well, go back in time and experience what LA used to look like during the original Farmer's Market Fall Festival, grab your bike for a Ciclavia through downtown, and enjoy all the fixins during Vegan Oktoberfest. All this and this week's Things to Do. Every year, the original Farmer's Market celebrates the fall harvest with a family-friendly Farmer's Market Fall Festival, a free gathering that includes crafts, demonstrations, live music, and a lively petting zoo. While celebrating the harvest may seem out of place in a city as populous as LA, there was a time when rolling farmlands were the primary attraction in Los Angeles. So bring your family and go back in time to what LA used to look like in the 1930s. There will be a pie-eating contest, photo contest, and great country and western swing, bluegrass, and banjo music throughout the weekend. It all takes place at the original Farmer's Market at Fairfax and Third on October 15th and 16th. For more, visit farmersmarketla.com. Time to start planning your car-free day through downtown LA as the next Ciclavia rolls through the heart of the city. Boyle Heights, Chinatown, downtown LA, and Westlake will host the country's largest Open Streets event. Participants are welcome to walk, bike, skate, run on Sunday, October 16th. For a detailed map, visit ciclavia.org. Vegan Oktoberfest is a traditional Oktoberfest celebration featuring great vegan food and beer. Unlimited pours of more than 50 different beers, more than 30 different food vendors. Not only will Vegan Oktoberfest feature steinholding contests, costume contests, and chicken dancing contests, but guests will enjoy oompa and dance music from some of the best performers in Southern California. The festival takes place Saturday, October 15th at LA Center Studios located at 450 South Big Cell Street. For more, visit veganoktoberfest.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's...
Members, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our work.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonin, and thank you, members of the City Council. I'd like to thank the DV Task Force for selecting me as this year's Browdy Award recipient and take this opportunity to acknowledge them for their invaluable knowledge and dedication to ending and preventing domestic violence in Los Angeles. I also want to acknowledge our DV shelter providers for their tireless efforts in keeping thousands of victims and their children safe, helping them navigate the complex social services and justice systems, and helping them gain independence and self-sufficiency. And lastly, I want to give a shout-out to my department, the Housing and Community Investment Department, for their support and commitment to advance civil discussion and civic action in addressing domestic violence issues in L.A. Thank you.
So, one more presentation, colleagues, as part of this. Annually, the Domestic Violence Task Force has hosted a Day of Action here at City Hall to focus on the topic and to recognize those who tirelessly serve survivors and keep our community safe, and to highlight a different aspect of the issue every year. This year, the Task Force got a lot more ambitious, and their appointees decided to reach out to each council office and organize an event in each council district. That way, we can engage more stakeholders across the city more effectively. This is just another example of the determination of this Task Force and their innovation in raising awareness and in helping survivors. I applaud the work of each of my colleagues who has supported their appointee in putting together these events. This Task Force really are sort of the unsung heroes of the domestic violence efforts here in Los Angeles, and we wanted to take this year's presentation as an opportunity to commend them for their work and to acknowledge them with a certificate.
Good morning. My name is Eve Sheedy. I wear two hats for the city. One is I am Council for Domestic Violence Policy at the L.A. City Attorney's Office, but I'm also the elected chair of the DV Task Force. I want to say thank you to council, particularly to Councilmember Bonin, Councilmember Blumenfeld, and Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Bonin stands with us every day of the year, not only today, but every time we need something or something has happened. He and his staff are always there to help us, so thank you so much. I also want to extend our congratulations to Nadine Shimoji, recipient of the Dr. Marjorie Browdy Award. Nadine is the best the city has to offer. To say she staffs the Task Force doesn't come close to describing how much work, energy, and effort she puts in. She is the person who keeps the Task Force together. It's my honor to work with her, and she truly deserves this recognition. And we have another. So. Additionally, the Law Enforcement Committee of the Domestic Violence Task Force has recognized four LAPD officers who deserve special recognition for their work in positively impacting the lives of victims of domestic violence. The voices of victims of domestic violence are rarely heard. We have provided each of you with a handout at your seat with material about each of these officers and their outstanding work. We are requesting that you share this information with your constituents to highlight the exemplary work of these officers of LAPD. So during Domestic Violence Awareness Month, I have the opportunity to talk to you about the work of the Task Force and the city's response to domestic violence, and this is, I think, my third year here. This year, there have been about 48,000 calls for service for domestic violence to LAPD to date. That is more than prior years where the total for the whole year was 48,000. Studies show that roughly one-third of domestic violence victims never call the police. Accordingly, even if we don't count all the calls for service, but just, let's say, 30,000 of those calls, we are conservatively looking at 90,000 to 100,000 victims of domestic violence in our city every single year. Moreover, to be truly effective, our work has to include not only resources for victims, but also resources for those who perpetrate domestic violence. So let's add another 100,000 people to that, because if we don't work with everyone, we cannot effectively address the issue. According to the LAPD website, there are about 45,000 gang members in the city of Los Angeles. The city funds GRID, which includes both intervention and prevention, at about $26 million a year. According to the latest LASSA poll, there are about 28,500 people experiencing homelessness in the city of L.A., and about 20% to 30% of those people are victims of domestic violence. The city plans to spend about $138 million to address the needs of that population. The number of DV victims in the city of Los Angeles is tens of thousands more than the number of gang members and the number of people experiencing homeless combined. Yet, the total amount of funding in the city's budget for victims of domestic violence is not $26 million, it is not $138 million, it is about $3 million. That money partially funds shelters and partially funds the domestic abuse response teams, and that's all. We have less than 500 shelter beds in the city of Los Angeles, and we have no funding for more beds. It can take a victim two to 12 hours and sometimes even days to locate a bed on a given night, if a bed can be found. Due to new HUD policies, we are at risk every year for losing up to 200 transitional housing beds, and we have no funding to make sure that they remain. Our DART funding is so low that many agencies use volunteers to fill those positions, and we have no money, no money, directed towards the prevention of domestic violence. We know that domestic violence is a precursor to gang violence. We know that children exposed to domestic violence often fail to thrive and may go on to commit other crimes and are be victimized themselves. And we know that DV—domestic violence impacts productivity at the workplace. Yet, we, as a city, do not address domestic violence in the way that we address other problems. The result is that domestic violence is growing, and we are not keeping up. We are no longer on the cutting edge. We are struggling. Twenty years ago, Dr. Marjorie Browdy founded the task force, and this council passed a motion to spend $5 million a year on domestic violence. Twenty years later, we still haven't gotten there. We cannot create new programs or work towards new solutions without additional resources. We need your support to improve our response to domestic violence. On behalf of the task force, we ask you to look at the success you have had in dealing with other issues, and please provide us with equal support. We are here to help, to help you, and to help the city, but we need your help as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Rue at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I really want to congratulate Nadine Shimoji and our DV Violence—domestic Violence Task Force in the Los Angeles Police Department. And I especially want to thank you, Councilmember Bonin, Councilmember Martinez, and Blumenfeld, for bringing this important issue to council today. And as many of you already eloquently stated, domestic violence disproportionately affects minority communities, and in particular, the Asian-American community. And, you know, there's some studies that show that 40—upwards to 40% to 60% of all Asian-American women have experienced physical and/or sexual violence, a rate higher than any other racial and ethnic groups. And in the Korean-American community, 42% of women have experienced physical violence or knew of a Korean woman who was in that situation. These rates—these high rates are due to the various immigration, societal, and cultural barriers. And as a former board member of CPATH, a domestic violence shelter, it's very important that we address domestic violence, especially in minority communities and Asian-American communities where it's often not talked about. So I really thank you for bringing this important attention to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Caretz?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to thank Ms. Martinez, Mr. Bonin, and Mr. Blumenfeld for bringing this forward, and Nancy Volpert for being our terrific representative on the task force. I've only had a couple experiences with domestic violence, and—not directly, but they've both been pretty dramatic. And it—one of them points out that it's not just, you know, female-by-male violence, but there are other combinations. When I was in West Hollywood City Hall around 20 years ago, there was a city employee who had a couple friends over with his partner, and in the middle of a dinner party, his partner announced that he was going to murder his partner, shooed the other people out of the apartment, and then killed our city staffer. As you can imagine, that was a pretty distressing thing for all of us, and City Hall was distraught for quite a while. My daughter in high school also had a classmate who happened to be Korean, who whose father murdered their entire family, except for her. So it was a murder-suicide, killed them all. I don't recall if she wasn't present. I think she wasn't there. I think she was sleeping over at a friend's house. So these things do happen. In both those cases, there was nothing visible that hinted to anyone that such a dramatic thing was going to happen until it did. And so probably there were signs, but people don't know what to look for, even after the fact, and in neither case did anyone see it coming. So definitely having the training, knowing what to watch out for, knowing what to do if you see it could not be more important, and I appreciate everyone's good work in focusing on this issue.
Back to you, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the presentation.
Let's give him one more round of applause. Thank you all so very much. Madam Clerk, why don't we recess the regular meeting, and let's move to the special meeting?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buskenis, Sadio Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer Caretz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rue Wesson. Fourteen members present, Mr. President.
Okay. I've got two speakers on this item, and then I'll ask the chamber and everybody to come up. But Mr. Previn and Mr. Sax, please come forward. Mr. Previn? Mr. Sax?
It's Eric Previn from the Second District, and welcome to all the folks from the Chamber of Commerce. Very exciting to be here in a special meeting with 53 seconds. Great, great report. Obviously, we are looking for some uptick in things. There's been a stasis. The one metric that I was able to break down quickly, which was a little bit concerning, is that only three of our 15 council districts are riding above the current average for median household income, which is awkward. You know, that's obviously Caretz, who is constantly getting kudos for having the richest district, and Bonin, and I believe Weezer. So that worries me, quite frankly, because everybody else is kind of below the average and struggling along. Studio City, we are the small business capital of our area, which we're very happy about because the less-than-15 workers per group is a good group to be developing and building. But, sir, we have some challenges, and I'm, you know, I'm hoping that together we can find some way to crack into this. We have 489 new units in CD II for the last period, which is single units, so that's all I can do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sax.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. And I brought in a copy of Sunday's L.A. Times, and what caught my attention was this story here, Haiti's Long List of Disasters. Okay? And I can appreciate the Chamber of Commerce doing all this heavy lifting on behalf of the county—or the city, but the county has the other 88 seven cities. But this part about Haiti's list of disasters refers to the hurricane in 2010, where people are still living in tents, six years later. So I'm wondering, because the City Council had this report a couple years ago about how the economic development of this city was in the toilet, and everything was down, and blah, 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 blah. And yet, the County Board of Supervisors, your budget has increased by $6 billion in 10 years, in less than 10 years, six years, and there's 47,000 people homeless in L.A. So as they say at USC, fight on.
Okay, thank you. If I could ask the representatives from the L.A. Chamber to please come forward. Sergeants, if you would allow them to get to the center table. And that concludes public comment on this item. Okay, I want to welcome—you welcome you to the council. This is an event yearly that we look forward to. With that said, I'm going to call on Mr. Tobin to kick things off.
Good morning, President Wesson and members of the City Council. On behalf of the L.A. Area Chamber of Commerce, thank you for welcoming us to Access City Hall, our annual event here, and to present our annual report on the economic performance of each of your council districts. The progress that was recorded by a number of members of the council when they spoke to us earlier this morning is exciting news. We are making progress. I'd like to ask the people who are still with us from our morning reception, who came for Access City Hall today with the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce, would you please stand up so that members of the council know who you are?
Let's give him a round of applause. Welcome, and thank you all for your service.
We had about 150 people in the rotunda this morning, and they appreciated your hospitality. Let me just summarize a couple of things that we applaud you for this past year, the tremendous progress at LAX and your commitment also to crafting a winning bid for the 2024 Summer Olympics and Parameutral—that's betting—Paralympic Games. We applaud your collaboration with the county to address homelessness and your support of business expansions like the Paramount Master Plan that will be on your agenda today. We have a list of eight priorities we'd like to go over briefly before we turn it over to Chris Thornburg to talk about his report. I'm going to turn it over to Tom Sales, who's the chairman of our board for the first portion of our presentation. Tom is with USC, Senior Vice President, External Affairs, and many of you know USC is the largest private sector employer in the city of Los Angeles. Tom Sales.
Welcome, Mr. Sales.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the City Council. It is my pleasure to serve this year as the chair of the board of the chamber. I am pleased to be here with you today to discuss the priorities that we are recommending for the upcoming year. First and foremost, the number-one priority is to make business growth and job creation our number-one priority in this city. When we were here last year, the council announced the formation of its ad hoc committee on job creation, to be chaired by a proud USC alum, Councilman Krikorian. That report was recently released, and we believe the city should aggressively work to implement those recommendations, particularly with regard to streamlining processes. Each of you can make a big difference in this regard. As you move to the next phase of creating a citywide economic development strategy, I strongly encourage you to make biotechnology a priority, because it has the potential to create thousands of jobs, more importantly, good-paying jobs. Even USC and UCLA can agree on the need for biotech parks here in this city. We cannot miss this opportunity. USC stands committed to build a biotechnology park in Councilman Weezer's district, which alone would create thousands of jobs. Now let me turn to the continued LAX modernization and metro connection process. Gary spoke about the progress we have made in modernizing LAX and the importance of the work to come. With the $5.5 billion land acquisition modernization plan headed towards the procurement phase, we are finally in a position to connect LAX to our metro system. We also applaud the recent MOU on the North Airfield between the council and Westchester, and the huge investments that the airlines are making in their terminals. And now I'll turn the mic back to Gary. Thank you.
Well, our next priority is one you've heard me talk about many times. That's the continued commitment to economic prosperity by expanding the reduction of the grocery receipts tax. As you are all so well aware, until this year, the city of Los Angeles has the highest business tax of any city in L.A. County and one of the highest in the nation. Last January 1, you implemented the first year of a three-year reduction in the grocery receipts tax. This was an important statement to the city's business community. We encourage you to stay on that schedule, and then in 2019, we'd like you to start again on another three years of reduction at the same rate for the grocery receipts tax. Also then, your commitment to the port of Los Angeles. We all know the importance of the port of L.A. to our economy, both collectively and to the many individual families who earn their living working at the port and industries that are related to the port. By aggressively supporting projects designed to increase the port's competitiveness, the council can ensure that our port is ready to meet the challenges, global challenges, especially the expanding of the Panama Canal. We strongly support and applaud you, you and the port, for your move to appeal the judge's decision on the BNSF Southern California International Gateway Project. Without the Southern California International Gateway Projects and other projects like it, other investments by the private sector, we will discourage private investments in our goods movement infrastructure at a time when we're faced with more competition than we've ever heard—ever had before. Now I'd like to turn it over to Jessica Duba, who is our VP of Public Policy. Jessica's been here for—with the chamber since 2010. She took two years off to get some additional training, working for councilmember Mike Bonin, and then she came back to us. Jessica.
Thanks, Gary. Our next priority is one that's been on this agenda for six years, and we're now at a turning point. And that's maintaining momentum on addressing our homelessness crisis. The Chamber and the United Way launched Home for Goods six years ago with the goal of ending chronic and veteran homelessness. With cooperation between local and federal officials and a landmark shift in county resources and policies, we've helped to house 14,543 chronically homeless people and 16,939 homeless veterans, but the number of new homeless is growing faster than our solutions. The Chamber and the United Way are partnering with you to pass this November's measure HHH, but passing the bond is just the first step. Your leadership will be key to using the funds wisely for land acquisition and construction of the permanent supportive housing, then in working with the county on a plan for wraparound services. Our next priority is supporting the co-equal goals of water supply reliability and ecosystem restoration. Los Angeles residents have done an admirable job of stepping up to the plate and reducing our water consumption in response to historic drought. However, conservation tactics can only take us so far. 25 million people throughout Central and Southern California depend on the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta for a portion of their water supply. We urge the city to boldly support Governor Brown's co-equal plans, the California Water Fix and Eco Restore, to address our longstanding water challenges and preemptively address future natural disasters. And now Gary will take a few moments to talk about our education and workforce development efforts and securing our energy supply as we head towards the winter months.
I know you share with us the feeling that success of our city is dependent upon the success of our schools and the quality of our workforce. Through our Education and Workforce Development Division, the chamber is proud to partner with the city of L.A. on a number of initiatives to improve outcomes for youth, particularly the most vulnerable. We encourage the city council during the next year to support the implementation of L.A. College Promise to provide one year of free community college tuition for L.A. USD and charter school graduates. Continue your commitment to the L.A. Compact, which brings together L.A. leaders from the education, business, government, labor, and nonprofit sectors to improve education outcomes. To partner with local schools and businesses in your districts to encourage link-learning, work-based internships, college and career pathways, and L.A. high-tech, and prioritize investments in higher L.A.'s youth and support for cash-for-college consultants at the city-owned Family Resource Centers. And lastly, securing our energy future. Reliable electricity and gas supplies are crucial to businesses and residents. Studies estimate the loss of revenue a business suffers from a blackout averages $17,000 to $20,000 per hour. Blackouts and gas curtailments are not just inconveniences, they are a financial disaster. Many industrial businesses and critical facilities, such as hospitals, transit agencies, and airports, rely on backup power using natural gas and other related fuels to maintain their core operations. The city's short- and long-term energy plans should assure, ensure a reliable and affordable baseline supply of energy today and in the future. We encourage you to work with the gas company to reopen Aliso Canyon in a safe manner and as quickly as possible. Thank you once again for this opportunity to share our eight economic priorities, and now I am pleased to introduce Chris Thornburg with Beacon Economics, who will present the 2016— present the 2016 Los Angeles City Council District's Economic Report, sponsored by Tesoro. Last week, we emailed each of you your offices an electronic copy and you have a hard copy in front of you today. Thank you very much for your attention and Chris, the floor is yours.
Oh, boy. Good to see you, Chris and Gary. I don't have a hard copy in front of me.
You want to? We'll go one to you.
Thank you.
Council members, it is, as always, a pleasure to be with you to do the next report. I'm waiting for my slides to pop up here. Should be any second now. Now, I want to just say a couple of minutes, you know, we've been doing this report for a number of years now and I got to tell you that this is, for us, a joy to do. And just so you're clear, when you're looking through this report, you know, we've looked around at so many other cities in the United States and nobody has this kind of report that talks about the inner workings of a city as large and complex as the city of Los Angeles. A fantastic view in the underlying dynamics of the economy and for us, it's just a pleasure to do every single year. And it's nice to be back today, particularly to present all sorts of wonderfully good news that has come out of the report this particular year. Now, before I get into some of that good news, it's good to paint a little bit of a broader picture. And for those who haven't been paying attention, of course, you're listening to any election rhetoric, it sounds pretty grim out there, but I'd like to point out that overall, the economy continues to do well. GDP growth is a bit sluggish, but underlying fundamentals are solid. Unemployment nationally is 5% and the participation rate stabilized. Employment growth has slowed down a little bit at the national level, but keep in mind the job openings rate is the highest it's ever been. What we're dealing with out there is not so much a slowing demand for labor, but rather a little bit more problem finding the skilled labor for these modern jobs. Median incomes rose at their fastest pace for years and years, from 2014 to 2015. Poverty rates were down. State growth is still outperforming the United States and Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles star continues to rise. Great news, we're going to go through here in just a second. Now, the business of government doesn't go away in the midst of all this good economic news, quite the opposite, as Gary already pointed out, there's any number of enormous long-term challenges and this is exactly the time to take these on and so we need to continue to push forward. Now, I'm getting into some of the more specific numbers. As I already noted, California remains one of the fastest-growing states out there. We're basically number 11 right now with about 2.5% growth on a year-on-year basis. There are almost 400,000 jobs being added, candidly, I think it's going to be revised up when we get towards the end of the year. Los Angeles County, one of the slower-growing counties within the state, but I'd like to point out that that's a natural effect having to do with the dense urban core of this broad greater Los Angeles region. And of course, remember that even with the slower 1.8% county growth rate, you're still talking about 75,000 jobs added over the course of the last year. That's more than San Jose and San Francisco put together. This is an enormous job machine for the overall state, pushing the economy forward. And that's right true right here in Los Angeles City as well, with, of course, working with Jan Perry and being able to pull the confidential data. The data shows that overall job growth continues to pace, in fact, a little faster here in the city of Los Angeles than for the county overall. And of course, the big growth sectors out there right now, we have the kind of other services, which include all sorts of personal services and various sorts of nonprofits near the top. Logistics booming forward, hospitality, which includes, of course, hotels and restaurants doing very well, construction's moving forward, healthcare is moving forward, professional services are moving forward, really across the board, there's very solid gains in so many of these important sectors here and inside the Los Angeles region. We can give you a little bit of a breakdown and of course, you'll get into more of the individual districts information, but here's a broad category as to what's happening out there right now. And of course, number one on the list right now, Mr. Bonin's district, still the big job creator with over 7,500 jobs. And I'll have to apologize, I should have brought my binoculars for my screen here. But then after that, of course, you also have...
Correct.
I can't see that.
Five.
Five, correct, thank you. So I think I need better eyes over here. Anyway, I'll let you look through those particular numbers, but as you can see, it's a broad mix. There's no one district that's pulling forward. It's not traditional job centers on the right. It's kind of a breakdown of the job centers versus growth and you can see, sure, 11, a big job center, high growth, but then you look at seven, not one of the bigger job centers, but also growing as well. Again, it's a broad-based mix, many things happening out there. Wages have been rising and this, of course, is for payroll employees, that is to say, people who work in the city don't necessarily live here, but wages continue to rise, have been a nice upward tick over the course of the last couple of years. And as for, of course, our various facilities, overall passenger traffic through LAX, through the roof right now, all sorts of economic activity being driven by this. I didn't have the C-Port data, but the ports are starting to pick up again as well. Of course, hotel activity across the city, very, very strong. All sorts of tourists coming to LA City, but also all sorts of businesses, business people coming here to do business within our great city. As for grocery receipts tax, again, great, this isn't taxes, excuse me, these are grocery receipts, good measure of actual business activity, business revenues, as the case may be. Across the board, again, very solid numbers here, but near the top overall is District 13 with a whopping 25% of increase. And beyond that, Ms. Martinez's exit sector up in the northern part of the valley there doing very well and yet again, Mike Bonin's district with big growth rates as well. Solid numbers coming out of those areas and you can see off to the right, one of some of the primary sectors that are driving overall gross revenues moving forward. Commercial permits are up as well. Indeed, construction activity in the non-residential side here in the city is growing faster than the county overall and you can see a mix of what's happening over there on the left. It's pretty broad-based, but retail and office are starting to bounce back. Of course, office being driven by a lot of that heat, particularly in these downtown and West LA region, where yes, office vacancies are starting to fall, rents are coming up. These core urban areas are such an important part of modern urban dynamics. Pay attention to that because that's going to be driving job growth into the future. Now, that's all about the job base here in LA City. It's also important to talk about the residents of LA City and there, yet again, the news is very good. The unemployment rate, of course, overall in the county is, believe it or not, has actually fallen below the state level. Unemployment here in LA County is about 5%. Now, we don't have 2016 numbers at this particular point in time, but we do have numbers through 2015 and it shows that the unemployment rate in LA City has actually fallen below the state overall and that's just something that's happened over the last couple of years. We were hit harder by the economic downturn, but that has gone away and you can see all the business activity, suddenly more and more folks are getting employed. And if you're wondering if is the decline in unemployment from people dropping out of the labor force, don't worry about that because it turns out the participation rate here in the city is actually higher than the county, indeed, higher than the state overall. So there's fewer people out there looking for work and there's more and more people who are actually working in the city. And of course, you definitely see that in the context of some of the income numbers. Overall median income rose very nicely last, in 2015 relative to 2014, mimicking at some level the overall increases we've seen at the national level. Overall poverty rates fell very sharply in 2015 relative to 2014. This is brand-new data that came out of the American Community Survey. We weren't able to use this for this individual council districts because they haven't released the underlying data tapes yet, but we'll have that for you in the next few months and of course, it'll be in next year's book. As for what's happening from an income distribution, probably best news overall is in the bottom left-hand corner there, where you can see that the number of households earning less than $25,000 a year has fallen very sharply. 20,000 households less earning that little. On the other side of it, households earning over $100,000 has grown by 28,000 from 2014 to 2015. And of course, you look at population growth also picking up and again, great news there. The biggest source of new population growth is in the 20- to 34-year-old range. You can see the young, new workers of tomorrow starting to pour, particularly in our center cities, enjoying that new kind of urban living, work-play lifestyle. It's bringing them in, it's the new hot place. All great things moving on. As for what's happening out there, I'm going to go briefly through some of the districts, give you a little bit of top news. Obviously, there's a lot more data in the book. In Gil Sadio's district, business activity is surging. If you look at overall grocery receipts through the roof right now, very solid numbers there in terms of businesses making more money. In Mr. Kocorian's district right now, consumer spending, that courses up in the NoHo area, that's becoming kind of a new arts district, very hot up there and you're certainly seeing it with intangible sales bouncing forward very nicely. Get over to District 3, Mr. Blumenfeld's, lots of job growth out in that particular part of the county right now, particularly, particularly, now this is way out in the western part of the valley, of course, but if you look at particularly in business services, insurance, professional services, you can see all those office buildings out in the west part of the valley starting to pick up. Great news on that particular front. In Mr. Ruse's district, one of the most important, right in the center of the city and such an important place, from really a live perspective, as the case may be, we know downtown's been so hot, but you're starting to see great activity in terms of new building permits, particularly in the mixed-use category along that central Wilshire corridor. Great news on that particular front. Not much to say about Mr. Koretz's district, we all understand it's some of the highest-income families and they're doing great out there right now and yes, those numbers continue to move forward at this particular point in time. Of course, Ms. Martinez's district up in the northern part of the valley, what has been historically one of the lower-income districts, but guess what, the valley, really across the board, the valley is doing so wonderfully right now and certainly you're seeing that in terms of the business growth and business taxes, business receipts, rather, up in the northern part of the valley. Again, very strong numbers there. Mr. Fuente's district, you're talking about a very solid growth in overall jobs at this particular point and led, of course, by healthcare, manufacturing moving forward, retail trade moving forward at this particular point in time as well. Probably one of the districts that has not seen overall growth in jobs, business activity, is Mr. Harris Dawson's district. We understand the long-term challenges being faced there, but here's the very good news. We looked at the income numbers for 2014 and they're rising rapidly. The growth in other parts of the city is helping his community and I think when the 2015 numbers come out, it's going to be even that much better. So it's good news for that district as well. Mr. Price, wages have been rising quite sharply in your area for workers in that area, obviously in the information sector, some of the most highest-paid jobs in the area, moving forward very strongly. President Wesson, right now, again, you are in the center of one of the new residential hotspots. Again, you can see that mixed-use kind of properties coming in. Mixed-use is really the wave of the future. We know that dense urban cities, this is a classic way of building both resident and an economic base at the same time. And again, you see those very strong numbers there moving forward. Mr. Bonin, you know, your area has been called this technology wonderland and it is, but you know, right now, what's driving your district is the airport because what's growing and what's big in the area, believe it or not, it's leisure hospitality and the warehouse logistics jobs that are moving forward. You see the activity at LAX driving the economy forward there and again, grocery receipts tax up very sharply. Mitch Englander is one of the last remaining sort of major industrial bases in our area right now and of course, up in that area, you're also seeing some very high taxable sales growth. Again, you can see the kind of spending moving out from the core into the periphery parts of the city. Mitchell Farrell, the other Mitch, as the case may be, Hollywood, of course, right in the core, great numbers coming out of Hollywood. You look at businesses, you look at employment, you look at housing, one of the hottest parts of the city. It's so nice to see what's happening on that particular front. Jose Weezar District, again, another big residential building sector, permits moving forward very nicely and very solid numbers in terms of taxable sales. And last but not least, looking down at the ports, the ports have been a little slow over the course of the last year or so, but things are starting to turn around and you're certainly seeing that in those wholesale jobs, but of course, and the transportation jobs, but it's also, of course, another area yet again, where you're seeing more development of housing and it's becoming a more and more important population growth area for the overall city as well. Now, with that brief rundown of what's been happening in different parts of the city, I have a little quiz. As you know, I have an education background and if all my council members could focus over here just for a second on my little matching game, I've divided the state of California into five regions, the Bay Area, the Central Coast, Greater Los Angeles, Greater Sacramento, and the South Central Valley. The reason I'm bringing this up is on the left-hand side, I'm showing you long-run job growth for these five different areas and as you can see, I have A, B, C, D, E, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And what I want you to do is play a little matching game. I want you to see if you can figure out which of these areas goes with which one of these job growth numbers over the last 20 years. Now, this is kind of important because I think the answer's going to surprise you. For those of you, I'm not going to get in and ask you what you think is what, but looking at that very quickly, most people would suggest that the Bay Area is probably either D and E in terms of job growth. It's not. In fact, I can tell you across the board, these are matched up. The fastest-growing job base in California over the past 20 years is the South Central Valley, followed by Greater Sacramento, followed by Greater Los Angeles, and of course, it's the Bay Area that's the absolute bottom in terms of job growth. Now, I get it, the Bay Area gets all sorts of kudos for the hot tech sector and the rising wages, but you have to understand that in the long run, overall growth of an economy is not based on cool sectors. It's not going to be based on glitzy new projects or, you know, a nice advertising campaign. In the long run, growth is driven by people and people, the population growth is driven by the supply of housing. I cannot tell you how important housing is from a long-run growth perspective and in the Bay Area, understand the tension that's happening there. Because of the unwillingness for them to build enough housing to match overall growth in the local economy, tech is flourishing, but it's flourishing at the expense of other parts of the economy. When you're thinking about L and you think about all these great professional services and technology and all these things moving into our city, which is fantastic news, the question we have to ask ourselves, is this going to come to support overall growth in the city? Is it going to come at the expense of overall growth in the city? And that all boils down to a question of housing. Now, the population growth in the city has been doing well. We've been keeping up and I can tell you right now, that's not a new phenomenon and that's after a long period of time where we were falling behind. But the reason growth has been keeping up is because the city has been aggressive about housing. And you can see the numbers. Take a look over there on the right-hand side, look at the multifamily permits, back to previous peak and still moving forward. Single-family almost back to previous peak. Compare that to the state overall, where multifamily is already starting to fall off and single-family is nowhere close to where it was. The city of LA, along with the city of, actually, San Francisco and San Jose, a few of the larger cities have made commitments to building housing and that is so important for long-run growth. Now, I know that prices have been going up and rental vacancies are very low, rental prices have been going up, but guess what? Supply works. It doesn't work overnight. I've said this before, we don't have an affordable housing crisis, we have a housing crisis. But all the supply coming on, all the new jobs, the incomes are rising and in 2015, affordability became better in the city of LA. If you're looking at the share of households that are housing cost burden, it has been falling because new supply is coming online. And the one thing I can implore you, and as a person who's watching, an enormous backlash against new housing, we know the propositions that are coming up, we know the rules people are trying to put into place, we know the resistance to the great news we've been seeing and seeing the impact of on the ground level. And my only last message to you is please, don't allow them to win. Housing is the number one issue to help move this city forward. You've done a great job, let's continue to do it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'd like to, Mr. Price has been waiting patiently.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the chamber for the presentation and for your hard work and for your last comment focusing on the importance of housing. Again, just can't underscore the importance of that and you're right. In the Ninth District, which has all sorts of other problems, you know, we've got a high inventory of affordable housing and in fact, we've got about 500 affordable housing units in the pipeline, so that's going to be helpful when it comes along. But I just want to congratulate the chamber for your attention, not only to the economics, you know, the job creation, who's working, not working, where these jobs are going, but to the other issues that impact our economy, like homelessness, and the chamber's been forefront of that. We mentioned housing, band the box, I know is an issue and a concern. So again, I just appreciate the comprehensive approach that the chamber has taken, not just focusing on, you know, how to improve the economy at the top, but also in the middle and at the bottom. And I think it's that kind of collaboration that's going to be important as we move forward, trying to come up with programs and policies and laws that are going to positively impact our citizens. So keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I wanted to make one comment I totally forgot to as well. You know, the data we use here for this particular report is usable in lots of different ways and if you're curious about some of the ways we can use this, I would encourage you to look at the Promise Zone work that we've been working on with Mayor Garcetti's office. Look up those Promise Zone reports. If you're looking for even a deeper dive, there are ways of doing that. Let us know, we'd be happy to work with you.
Thank you. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all once again for this annual report that we all look forward to and I'm so pleased that so much of this report is really very, very positive news because it kind of confirms with data what I think many of us have sensed anecdotally, which is that things are on the upswing and continue to be on the upswing in Los Angeles. We have a lot more still to do to address wage inequality and the fact that not everyone is enjoying this economic upswing, but it is a foundation for building for an economic future that will benefit all Angelenos and I think the data demonstrates that. I'm especially pleased for the valley members that... And I'm especially pleased for the valley members that it is clear that the San Fernando Valley is especially hot right now. And I hope that all valley residents will continue to see the opportunities that are present for us, especially if we're able to do the expansion of our transit system that will be, that will be, will be able to deliver for the San Fernando Valley with a passage of Measure M in the November ballot, which is absolutely essential to be able to continue to bring people from home to work and from work to home in, in the San Fernando Valley. Thank you, Gary, for your kind words on the comprehensive jobs creation plan. I'm pleased that the number-one priority that you've set forth of your priority list is exactly what we're doing right now. And I want to thank again President Wesson for creating the ad hoc committee and for all of my fellow members of that committee. We will be presenting that comprehensive report next week in council, and I think it'll be an important next step forward. With regard to your, your priority of securing our energy future, I think the motion that Mr. Bonin and I introduced with Mr. Kreutz's second to move Los Angeles to a fully-carbon-free energy future is a part of that. And while it's certainly true that grid reliability is critical to our business sector, to our consumers, to our residents, moving in the direction of making that grid carbon-free is equally important, not just for environmental, but also for economic and jobs-creation reasons. And I think we're doing it in a thoughtful, policy-based approach that will address the issues of reliability as well. Now, I just have a couple of questions on a few of the data points, because we, every year, have a little chat about the grocery receipts tax here, and then we have that same chat when it comes to budget season. And I, again, want to remind everyone that the grocery receipts tax currently provides 10% of the general fund budget. It provides more revenues than the Los Angeles City Fire Department spends every year. So when we talk about the services that are essential to our business community, obviously, many of those services are funded by our robust grocery receipts tax. And I see, and Gary, you're right, I'm pleased that we're taking steps in, in not only reducing the rate, but making it simpler and more predictable. We continue to make progress in that way. But I am very pleased, seeing page 11 of this report, to see that grocery receipts tax have been booming. Every year since 2010, we've had an increase in the grocery receipts tax realized. And to me, that's a good sign about business. Yes, it's a burden on business, but it's also an indication that despite that burden, businesses are continuing to come to Los Angeles. Every single year, we have a net increase in new business starts in Los Angeles since then. So I think that this is very promising news about our ability to, yes, make the grocery receipts tax fairer, lower, more predictable. But at the same time, I think this data, again, puts, it's a very strong argument against those who would take the position that an elimination of the grocery receipts tax would be a positive step forward for, for business, especially if it's done all at once. I think that that is, that is a fundamentally flawed notion, and I think this data tends to, to demonstrate that as well. So my question, I guess, is, can you compare, Chris, because I was looking at this and trying to find comparative data with the city's experience in recent years, say, the last five years, and the county's experience? Can you give us some indication in terms of unemployment rate, business starts, sales tax generated, business revenues generated, any of those sorts of data points where we have a, a ability to compare city businesses versus county businesses over the last five years or so?
The, the city has clearly been outperforming the county over the last few years on many different metrics. Job growth's been a little faster, the basis of, if you think about the growth, say, in taxable sales or even the, the non-residential permits, all suggests the city is, is doing better than the bulk of the county. And candidly, I think, you know, we can debate what's driving that, but I always like to point out that the city is the heart of the county. And you are, across the board, seeing an, and a growing interest in urbanization. We're seeing that, not just here in California, but across the United States. It's the, the dense urban cities that are the ones that are growing. And I think that that's, that's a wonderful opportunity for the city to continue to, to capitalize on.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And I guess, just to make the final point on, on the GRT, we've made great progress, as you've all pointed out, both in terms of modernization of the airport, investing in transit, modernization of the port, all of the, you know, big-ticket strategic objectives that the chamber has been talking about for years. I think, you know, we've been making significant progress in all of those areas, and that is an attractive thing in creating economic vitality for our region, for the entire region, not just the city, but the county and points beyond. So, given the fact that our growth is continuing to outpace the county's growth, and the vast majority of non-L.A. city county territory either has no gross receipts tax or very low gross receipts tax, and we have a, an admittedly high gross receipts tax, I'd just like to point out that anybody coming to this region to start a new business, to take advantage of our ports and our airport and our infrastructure, has a choice to make. They can start their business in the city, or they can start their business in a place like Valencia, which has lower housing rates and no gross receipts and this and that. But they're continuing to start their businesses in Los Angeles. They're continuing to drive unemployment down in Los Angeles at a faster pace than the rest of the county. They're continuing to produce more business revenues in the city than in the other areas at a faster pace. So I'd just like to point that out, because I agree, Gary, with our need to continue to be attentive to that issue. But when it comes to budget season, I want everybody to remember that we've had this discussion and that the city is outpacing the county in all of those areas despite the grocery receipts tax. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the members of the chamber for your leadership around creating a business environment that has created, I think, one of the most dynamic cities anywhere in the country to do business and one of the most innovative environments. A question I had, really into the weeds, a very specific number, but I have to tell you, it popped out at me and, and was a little startling. The drop in the number of people with an income of less than $25,000 was not matched by an increase of people making 50 to 75,000 or 75 to 100,000. The, the big increase was with people making over $100,000. And we know that the way work-life works is, you don't go from making 25,000 to making 100,000. So it, it, what it looks like is we moved out a bunch of low-income people, and we moved in a bunch of high-income people. That's the very definition of gentrification. You raised San Francisco as an example, as an example of, of what can happen in an overheated economy. I, I'm concerned that we're producing similar types of outcomes, and so I would love to hear more about that specific number.
No, that's a great, it's a great point, absolutely. And I, I'm, I think there's two things happening here. A, yeah, I think some of this is, is moving out in and out, so it's a net migration sort of issue. But it is also the case that the current job growth we're seeing, the economic opportunities that are being created in Los Angeles are not exclusive to the highly-skilled, highly-paid folks out there. There really is a broad-based gain. And a lot of that is, believe it or not, people bumping up. Now, your point about, well, okay, this number's look big down here and this number's high up here, but there's a lot of people moving up. We'd have to sit down and break it out, and there are ways of doing that, and I think it's a very important question. But I'm going to go back to, to what I started with. The gains in L.A. can be for everyone as long as we have enough housing to allow everybody to be here. And it goes back to a question of just sheer housing supply. You know, I, I hear a lot about an affordable housing crisis and understand that in so many ways, it's, it's, it's about the low-income families, but it's also about the middle-income families, and they often get left out of this equation. In fact, I was talking to one of Gary's staff not too long ago, whose cousin, great job with B of A, moved to Fort Worth. And his answer was, "I can't live here." And, and there's too many people having to make that choice. So I, I hear you 100%, but, but again, I'm going to go back to this idea that it's about densification. It's about taking the current success we've seen in housing construction and housing stock and pushing that forward. It's so desperately important.
Thank you. Mr. Tobin, you want to wrap things up? There are no other speakers on the queue.
Well, we appreciate your time today. And once a year, we try to focus your attention 100% on jobs and the economy, because we know if the economy is strong in our community, you have the revenue to provide the kind of services that the citizens want. So thank you for your time. We look forward to continuing to work with you, and we have a lot of work to do in the next month on several ballot initiatives, and then we have a lot of work to do on a ballot initiative in March. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. And it, it was really, it's always good to see you, but it just seems like this day is getting better and better. And Chris, you're in top form, and thank you for all of the work that you and your staff put into it. Thank you, guys. We'll see you soon. Okay, let's keep it calm. All right, now, so Madam Clerk, why don't we adjourn special, return to the regular? Okay, so let's, it's vote on item two at this point. Let us open item two. It's okay, Mr. Price's concerns have been satisfied, so let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, and also, I'd like to move to items, I believe, 43 through 46, and call on Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Each of these items is a recommendation for settlement that's been considered by the Budget and Finance Committee. Committee recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations, and those can all be done in open session unless members have questions.
Okay, let's defer to this, to the city clerk. Please read these items.
On item 43, in the case entitled AOB versus the City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $123,000 in settlement. On item 44, in the case entitled Wayne Weiner versus the City, there is a recommendation to expend $350,000 in settlement. On item 45, in the case entitled AT&amp;T Corporation versus the City, there is a recommendation to accept a settlement offer of a credit of $595,178 towards AT&amp;T's future city tax liability. And finally, on item 46, in the matter of J2 Global Inc., J2 Cloud Services Claim for Refund, there is a recommendation to accept the offer of a refund in the amount of $2,071,488.64.
Thank you. Okay, members, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. I now want to move to general public comment. I want to start off with Joanne Garb, Carla Mesa, Margarita Hernandez, please come forward. Go right ahead.
Joanne Yovanikar, West Hills Neighborhood Council. I just wanted everybody to know, I came down here specifically for number 19, and I, people, we in West Hills are taking the lead in that we have formed a homelessness committee, and it's very, very active. And we are now involved with three other neighborhood councils bordering us, that they have come over. So we're forming a coalition within the West Valley. So this is something that maybe you should take into consideration and work with us as far as developing your homelessness advocacy program. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will, I'm sure Mr. Harris Dawson is taking a keen interest in that, and so will many of us. So if I can get Carla Mesa, when I call your name, please come. Carla Mesa, Margarita Hernandez, Erin, please come forward, or if you... And I meant Clara. I am so sorry. Clara, I apologize.
Buenos dias, concejales. Hola, mi nombre es Clara Mesa. Trabajo en Sky Chef en el aeropuerto de Los Angeles. Buenos dias, concejales.
Good morning, council members.
Hola, mi nombre es Clara Mesa.
Hello, my name is Clara Mesa.
Trabajo en Sky Chef en el aeropuerto de Los Angeles.
And I work in Sky Chef in the Los Angeles Airport.
Hacemos la comida para los pasajeros.
We prepare the food for the passengers.
He trabajado en Sky Chef por 31 años.
I have worked in Sky Chef for 35 to 31 years.
Gano 13.71 la hora.
And I earn 13.71 cents an hour.
Mi trabajo es equipo que sale de las máquinas de lavar trastes.
My work is to assemble the equipment that comes out of the machines.
En mi área de trabajo siempre estamos trabajando parados en agua.
In my working area, we're always working standing up on water.
Mi área es caliente y húmeda.
My area is hot and humid.
Trabajamos encerrados. No tenemos ventilación adecuada.
We work in a closed area, and we don't have proper ventilation.
Sky Chef instaló una máquina para desechos de comida.
Sky Chef's installing machine for, for, for food, waste.
Aquí es donde toda la comida se va a ir a tirar los desechos.
Right here is where all the food is going to be thrown.
Cuando echan mucho desperdicio, la máquina se tapa.
When they throw a lot of waste, the machine clucks up.
Y tira agua y pone mal olor como drenaje.
And it leaks water, and we have a bad odor in, in the drainage.
En nuestra área de trabajo que nos causa dolor de cabeza.
In our working area, we have.
Okay, she's got to wrap it up now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McGallister, that's the second time you've disrupted this meeting. Please don't do it again. Thank, thank you, and please identify yourself.
Mi nombre es Margarita Hernandez, y trabajo en el aeropuerto en Sky Chef.
Hi, my name is Margarita Hernandez, and I work in the airport in the Sky Chefs.
Gano 11.45 la hora.
I earn 11.45 cents an hour.
Yo trabajo en el dishroom limpiando el equipo que llega de los abuelos.
I work in the dishroom cleaning the equipment that arrives from, from the flights.
En el dishroom tenemos cinco máquinas que Sky Chef no les da buen mantenimiento.
In the dishroom, we, we have five machines that the Sky Chef does not give proper maintenance.
Y el sistema de drenaje regularmente no puede con todo el agua que las máquinas echan.
The drainage system regularly cannot go pop with all the, the dirty water the machines eject.
Esto causa que los drenajes se sobreciernen y causa que nosotros trabajemos parados en agua sucia, caliente, y con jabón.
This causes that the drains are overflowed, and this causes that we work standing up in dirty water, hot and soap.
Unas máquinas no echan jabón.
Some machines do not eject soap.
Porque las máquinas no lavan bien. Tenemos que poner los trastes a remojar en tinas de agua caliente.
Because the machines do not work properly, we have to soak the dishes in hot water.
Con químicos prohibidos como el cloro.
With banned chemicals as Clorox.
Todos los días tengo que meter las manos en agua caliente.
Every day I have to put my hands in hot water.
Con químicos cuando salgo me duelen mucho las manos.
With chemicals, and when I get out, my, my hands hurt.
Okay, wrap it up.
Estamos pidiendo nada más que hagan pasar la ley del salario digno.
We're just...
Las condiciones de trabajo que las arregles Sky Chef, por favor.
We're just asking for a, better wages and to, so that the Sky Chef make a better living for the employees.
Thank you. Thank you. So if we can have Ira Enriquez, or, please.
Good morning. My name is Morena Ira Enriquez. We think this is a great opportunity for all us, the workers... Um, we think this is a great opportunity for all us, the workers, to get power to earn a little extra to help our families. In flying food group, we always have problem in receiving our check. Always something missing, our hours or overtime. That's the reason why we're fighting for something, something that belong to us. And it's time to show the city of L.A. and the country that we need and deserve a better, a better life to provide, a better service in our city. We are here because by working in one of the company that do not yet comply with the law for paying us the living wage. And we see this like, or opportunity to feel strong and fight for our fair payment. I'm working around six years, and my wage before our contract was nine dollars and fifty-four cents. I feel very sad every time that my coworker said that they don't have time to share with their family, with their childrens. So, I think if the children and the young people is the future of this country.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, I, uh, thank you. I saw Mr... I think I saw Mr. Carrion leave. So, Ruth Landaverte, Oscar Garza, Javier Sarmiento, please come forward. Patrick Smith. And just come on up and identify yourself. You don't have to go in order. So, please.
Good morning, President Wilson. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Oscar Garza. I've come here today all the way from Dallas, Texas, because your banking with integrity ordinance is groundbreaking legislation for all of us in the banking industry. Los Angeles will hopefully be the first city to say we will not do business with banks who use predatory sales goals. I was a personal banker with JP Morgan Chase from 2012 to 2000, 2010 to 2012. In that responsibility, we would have a morning huddle every day, go over our sales goals, go over what the branch goals were. And that was a constant reminder, constant testament to the fact that banks are a for-profit industry with no regard to customer economic ability. Banks do not care whether or not customers can afford an auto loan or not afford an auto loan. They do not care whether or not a customer wants a credit card or...
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Garza. So, if I could have the next speaker, and thank you, and have a good trip home. If I could have the next speaker come forward. Or do I have Ruth, is Ruth here? Come on, come on up, or, and Javier, and then Patrick. Go ahead.
Can I extend the time for the translation?
Uh, can I get extra time, please, for a translation?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, where's our translator? Wasn't that extra, it's just a different way of doing things. If I could get our translator?
Oh, he's, okay, he's got it.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Javier Sarmiento.
Good morning, my name is Javier Sarmiento.
Yo vivo en el Valle San Fernando, in Panorama City.
I live in San Fernando Valley, in Panorama City.
Y también, este, soy un miembro orgulloso del grupo comunitario ACE.
And I also a proud member of the group ACE.
Y estoy aquí porque tengo una queja.
And I am here because I have a complaint.
En el año 2010, 2008, cuando la economía se vino bajo gracias a los bancos.
In 2010, 2008, when the economy collapsed due to the banks.
Los bancos me estaban inundando con cartas y tarjetas de crédito.
The banks were sending me letters and credit cards.
Acusándome también las agentes trabajadores de los bancos que gastaron las credit cards, que usaron las credit cards, y también los cheques.
They were harassing me that I had to use the credit cards and the cheques as well.
Y hoy, este, quiero darle las gracias al señor Corretz.
Today, I want to thank Mr. Corretz.
And señor, señor Coquarien.
And Mr. Coquarien.
Por introducir la moción, uh, bancos con integridad.
By introducing the motion, "Banks with Integrity."
Que es muy importante.
It is very important.
Que alguien esté mirando estos banqueros.
That someone is keeping an eye on those bankers.
Porque están, este, colapsando las comunidades.
Because they're collapsing the communities.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
So, if I can add the next, Ruth, or Patrick Smith, please just come up and identify yourself.
My name is Patrick Smith. I'm a member of ACE. First of all, I would like to thank council members Paul Corretz and Paul Coquarien for introducing the banking with integrity laws. As a representative, I am also asking of you to stop sale goals of Bank of America, Wells Fargo, and Chase. And stop also doing business with them. Instead, reputable banks such as community banks and credit unions deserve to be included or considered for council to do business with. Please also pass laws to protect whistleblowers and also to...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. If I could have the next, uh, I have Ruth, who I don't believe has spoke. She's not here? Okay, uh, so I need now Jacqueline, Pamela Pearson, Jacqueline Richardson, Yvonne Autry. If you guys would make way for the other speakers. Thank you all for coming. Please come forward and identify yourself.
My name is Pamela Pearson. I wanted to approach, I need to approach the council today to express our gratitude, particularly specifically to a deputy within Mr. Corretz's CD V council. That would be Germi Kara, who worked in addition with Mr. Ruth's council district to assist us by working with the police empowered by the city attorney's office to last weekend shut down one of these two-acre party houses. They succeeded in impressing all of many, many constituents who came by to express their gratitude and to get to celebrate what our police can accomplish. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson. Ms. Jacqueline Richardson, Ms. Yvonne Michelle Autry, and Ruth Sernoff.
A few Russian white men, young white men, expressed an interest in helping to resolve some of the problems involving the Russian people here as immigrants or refugees. They wanted to know what problems are there. We want to help resolve them. They did that because they know coming here is a privilege and a gift. It's not an imperative. So, they expressed that interest. What they don't know is, some of the Russian women don't want to be involved in three marriages. I'm assuming they don't want three women inside a marriage with one man. What they don't know is that the Jewish commandment, thou shall not commit adultery, will resolve that problem for them if they apply that. What they also don't know is thou shall not commit adultery. Some of the young men, black, white, and other races, are go around putting babies into women, impregnating them with illegitimate children. That'll take care of that problem.
Thank you. So, if I could get Ms. Sernoff.
Are we on general public comment or some special public comment?
This is general.
Okay. I want to speak to the way in which so much material comes to this body that has only been through committee and has never been really discussed and talked about in open forum here. I find that really a very, very distressing situation. Number two, with what's going on with Wells Fargo. Now, the state has taken one-third of their investment and their banking situation out of the hands of Wells Fargo. It's, uh, would be nice to see this body with the record that Wells Fargo has had as a slumlord and as a, uh, one who has not respected the poor people of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ruth, thank you, Ms. Sernoff. So, if I could have Ms. Autry, please come forward. Just sit down, Ms. McAllister, we are not finished. Do not disrupt the meeting, I'm gonna call you, just relax. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you again. I object to diminishing our time to one minute. That's not adequate time to express even one thought completely. For the record, I'd like to report that an officer, Torres, did make an inappropriate statement or inappropriate innuendo stating that he would want to show me his power drill in response to a call that I'd made to the LAPD regarding a dog or an animal that was in distress. Again, this is relative to abuses or harassments of residents, especially black women. I'd like to bring attention some of the Mexican maintenance men that are being hired by the Jewish building owners to harass those that they want evicted. And it's an attack, I think, from these men that think that single black women are prostitutes because that is their culture. That is not their culture. Antonia says wetbacks. I'm not using that term.
Thank you, your time is up. So, if I could have Ms. McAllister, your time is up, Ms. Autry. So, Ms. McAllister, the way we're gonna do this, you, right now, we're in general public comment. You get your general public comment, and then you have three minutes to speak on items twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-two, and thirty-seven.
I thought I get five minutes total.
So, right now, right now.
Okay, um, Mr. President, I disagree with these council meetings, how you jam in all of these presentations, award ceremonies, every, dogs, you even bring dogs in here to get homes for them, while you are scamming and sneaking in, giving these people who have contracts, here you got one for Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative, $680,000. See, that's what this is all about. You sneaking in all kind of money, giving, uh, Los Angeles Unified School District a million. I mean, this is what this is about. See, I know the game. And as far as the Chamber of Commerce is concerned, when I had my business in Chicago, my company was a member of the chamber. They're doing nothing but giving parties and getting drunk, okay? And we have to pay dues. What are they doing with all those billions in dues that they're getting? The Chamber of Commerce is nothing but a scam. And like Harris Dawson said, they're talking about the rich. They're not talking about the poor. You're running the poor out of this city. So, we need to get rid of the Chamber of Commerce and hold them accountable. They're nothing but a scam. Now, my comment about number, I put in a card for number thirty-two. And as I mentioned here, LAUSD, you're giving them a million dollars for, uh, under the General City Purposes Fund and to do some work with housing. Uh, how are you gonna put the school district in the housing department? I don't understand that. What I'd like for this council to do is get involved with the school system. The LAUSD school system is eighty-five percent Hispanic. Those are the children of the illegal aliens. I said eighty-five percent. You can go online and find that out yourself. Now, I am interested in the teachers. The teachers are being scammed from their retirement funds and their salaries. And there's gonna be an administrative hearing held this Thursday, October, uh, next Thursday, October twentieth, at eight-thirty in the morning, at three-twenty West Fourth Street in Los Angeles. That's Suite 630. I'm a computer scientist, and I got a hold of a copy of the database specifications. And I have found out where they're changing people's, teachers' codes in order to lower their retirement fund so they can steal it. I have a lot of information. And they're trying to hold me off, they've been holding me off for five years. So, I finally got this meeting. I'm a very persistent person. So, I need everybody to come out, teachers and everybody else who work for LAUSD, who have family members, because you are being scammed. Now, I also like to talk about the fact that this council jammed all of my comments into one speech. And then, they're gonna throw me out of the meeting. I want people to come to these committee meetings. This council has been canceling a lot of committee meetings. You are not supposed to be canceling committee meetings. Seems like every month, you're taking a week off. Those committee meetings are where the motions are put into action. And we don't get those motions. You come in here and start voting on motions that we don't know anything about. And mostly, those motions are about giving your buddies more money in these contracts. Also, all these contracts you're awarding, none of them are going to black people and their businesses. And I say none of them, I mean none of them. And I go to these committee meetings, and they claim, oh, we don't have a database to track if black people or women are getting contracts. In Chicago, where I'm from, you can go online and see everybody who gets contracts, and you can see who the minorities are. You're doing this on purpose. I went to a committee meeting where they wanted to give us a clerk typist. And we know what a clerk typist is. They had her down for a hundred and five thousand dollars a year. I got up and I complained, you wouldn't, like you wouldn't believe, and they took it off the agenda. I know what you guys are doing. You're doing nothing but stealing. I want Skid Row dismantled. I want my people off of Skid Row. And I'm gonna pray every day that each one of you be taken down by God until you get my people off Skid Row and off the streets of this city. They're all over, under bridges. Every time I drive around, I see my people laying on the ground. And for you three black people on here, I'm really gonna hold you accountable. Because if you can't do your job, get out of here. Get off the council. I wouldn't have this job if I couldn't help my people.
Thank you. If I could have Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Sax. Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you can start off with your one-minute public comment and then go into your other agenda items. So, right now, you are on general public comment.
Measure M. This is the most important measure we've ever voted. It's a forever tax, eternity, eight-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars a year. Then it jumps, that's a half percent. Then it jumps to one percent after twenty years. This is the money, what? Nobody, we had more people using bus only than we had using bus and rail. What we want right now is simple. At least you're listening. I'm telling you right now, and what I really, that's what I really like doing to these people if I could get away. I'm telling you right now that we have to know on Measure M.
Okay, now, Mr. Walsh, you have items twenty-one, twenty-two, thirty-five, twenty-nine, uh, forty-seven. Go ahead, three minutes.
You're calling me on forty-seven when you already had public comment on forty-seven. You didn't call me on forty-seven, and you...
I got it late, my, go ahead.
You can do whatever you want, anytime you want. No, I don't want anything. First...
You're confused, forty-seven hasn't been called, go ahead.
I'm in fine shape. Animal Services. Ms., uh, take a look at the, uh, you should go to Daniel Gus. Animal Services is out of control. Uh, no for Ms. Finston. That's number twenty-one. Next is number twenty-two, and that is... That is, oh, this is the, this is the EIR for Paramount Pictures. The city council plays... The city council plays Monica Lewinsky to Bill Clinton and Hillary Clinton's, to Bill Clinton, to the Paramount Pictures. Paramount Pictures rules Hollywood. They're getting an EIR, they're tearing down the neighborhood. And that was 2022. See, the frog has left my throat. I didn't need any of the city council's water. I have my own water. Number 29, this is the Hollywood Walk of Fame, Kevin Hart star. I challenge any of you to go to Hollywood and Vine and take a look at the terrible condition of the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Filth, scum, dried feces. It is disgusting. In fact, tourists don't go anymore. I hope you've heard that the big criminality, people were shot up, one of the hotels, excuse me, one of the nightclubs was shot up on Vine Street, Hollywood and Vine. The whole neighborhood is in terrible condition. And I just want people to say, if you come to LA, avoid Hollywood. You will be spit on. You will be harassed by hundreds, actually thousands, of people. And they have homes. They just go to Hollywood Boulevard to annoy you and to intimidate you into paying, into protection money. Have at least $10 for protection money, because you will be harassed. And these are not homeless people. These are scum.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Sax. You'll be followed by Mr. Previn. Mr. Sax, your first minute will be general public comment. Then you have your multiple items, 27, 32, 33, 34, and 37. You'll have three minutes on that. So your general public comment now. You have one minute. Come on.
Well, sir, three minutes on five objects, five items.
You're on general public comment now.
I am on general public comment. I can comment on this, right? Three minutes on five items. You list in your agenda, these are items noted for public hearings. According to the court ruling, only questions raised at public hearings are allowed to be, oh, shit, allowed to be, are allowed to be questioned in a lawsuit. Well, if you limit us to three minutes on public hearing items, you're denying us the right for that extra public hearings, to be questioned about public hearings. And you can't make those changes. Your rules state one thing. You can change what you want on public comment, but you can't really change the rules on public hearings. And Mr. Bonin, last time I was here, you talked about your drug rehabilitation. Congratulations. So the question would be, drug rehabilitation or the Olympics? Which one is it?
Thank you. Now, you can go to your items. Give him his three minutes.
So, three minutes. Again, that's not fair, Mr. President.
You gotta stay on the items.
I am on the items. So, two of the items refer to revenue, but one, two of the items refer to building. The city is gonna issue bonds. One is conduit revenue bonds, and the other is revenue bonds, period. And it said here in the agenda item, one is for financing construction, that was 27. And the other on 37 was proposed with acquisition, construction, and development of the project. And includes financing of the project. And the reason I'm asking you to bring this out is, the city just got sued in a lawsuit. Lost $200 million in a lawsuit. So what part of this is the city building these projects? Why is the city getting sued for building projects when they're just providing the revenue? Why is that happening? Why isn't somebody being held accountable in the Housing Department for inspecting these units? Why isn't that happening? Coliseum revised government structure. This is a real big deal. After the Coliseum Commission, with the corruption that happened there, with the scandal with all the management, nobody was found guilty. Slap on the wrist. And the County Board of Supervisors that was sitting on the commission, well, let me tell you this, they didn't know anything. Standard operating procedure. So what changes are you gonna make? Why is the county overseeing a state facility when the county's facility in Pomona, the Fairplex, is being run by a nonprofit? And you might have read some of the stories about how that nonprofit, the head of the nonprofit, kept getting salary increases as the revenue for the Fairplex went down. Again, county operating, standard operating procedures. And item 32 refers to grant funds for some projects. And there was a story a couple of weeks ago about Santa Monica Airport. And the telltale part of that story was that the airport needed to meet the commitments of the federal grant. The federal grant is 20 years. So when you get a grant, you receive the grant, you have 20 years to spend that money. In that instance, it was like $250,000, and the city people who live around the airport wanted to close the airport, but they couldn't because the 20-year timeframe means the grant lasts from like 19, 2003 to 2023. And so it comes out to like $1,000 a month for 20 years to keep that airport open.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. We'll start off with your general public comment, Mr. Previn.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn here in the general public comment for inappropriately short 60 seconds. I'll try to be clear. The Mayor Garcetti needs to step forward, if possible, and assist the city with some very important governance issues that we are facing. The CD7 seat vacated by Mr. Fuentes on September 11th has not been appropriately handled. We need, this body, the council, and that's why I'll be setting up a whistleblower hotline for council members later, need to step forward and, as a group, in conjunction with the law and the charter, appoint a CD7 resident who will vote on behalf of the 250,000 constituents of CD7. The mayor is the one who will help us with that. The city attorney, the auditor, the controller, and the other jobs, when they change, that's what happens. It's unthinkable to think that USO, for example, would appoint the mayor if he were unopposed. I know you would serve as the mayor, but that's what the charter says.
Thank you. So now, he's got his three minutes.
Okay. And now for the three minutes. Thank you, sir. I feel there's a quiet little war that needs to be brought forward between a group called the lobbyists and a group called the public. And we're waging a war for our council members' attention. And at item number 45 today, we settled a refund request, they sued us, AT&amp;T, who, believe it or not, are sponsors today.
You gotta stay, Mr. Previn.
This is the item.
That item was already voted on. And there's no public comment on it. So come on, Mr. Previn. Speak on your items. No, you're wasting your time.
Item 19 is what kind of homelessness solutions is Mr. Harris Dawson seeking? Because we've seen the Carol Sobel-related ones, where we invoke some system that then results in lawsuits.
Same thing, Mr. Previn. Hold his time, Mr. Previn. You have items 36, 34, 33, 32, 26, 38. No, you fill these out yourself. You should know what you were gonna say on these items.
I know exactly what I'm talking about.
Then pick one of those items. You can restart his time.
I want to speak on the items that are on the agenda. Is, did I, I signed up for 26, where you have embedded in the item ASM affiliates, which is a $100,000 cha-ching for some consultants who help in our historic preservation department, where a week ago, you approved 39 new Mills Act properties, 15 of which were in CD10. So that's of note. It's a lot of money. It's 100 of the 335. Item number 32, again, we cringe for the CD7 constituents, though we're familiar with Bacoima Beautiful, there is no voice for those people on that item, which in item 32, they're making some appropriation. Item number 33, I believe, is the Coliseum Commission. So here we have naked corruption, and what we're doing is we're expanding it to add a few eyeballs. So some of us would say, hey, that's a good idea, because now there'll be some fresh eyes looking. But unfortunately, that is a little worrisome, because now it's about building up the kind of tutelage piece. Now, we want more people to serve because we've processed inappropriately that horrifying abnegation on behalf of the people by our many elected leaders, including the supervisors, the city, and the various others. Item number 34 is a tract map revision, and this is of note. This is for the border where, if I'm not mistaken, South Los Angeles and downtown meet. They want to put up a massive, when I say massive, I mean giant high-rise tower. Now, let's be supportive, perhaps that could be a good thing. Certainly, the shade would be appropriate to protect some of our homeless in the area of that giant high-rise structure. And I don't know much about it, but it's weird to see it with such little description on such an agenda like this. Maybe we could decorate it later. Item number 36 is Athens Services, a group we have to raise our brow and watch closely. They've been generous, but they're also generous with the campaigns, and it's worrisome. Mr. Krikorian is accepting the unallocated funds for CD2 to use in a nonspecific watering project. It's specific, but we don't know how much either of analog added funds or what we're gonna be watering that's already been done, so it's worrisome. And we're giving the money, just like with item 38 for the Vineland Medium Project, which I've been interested in, to a group called, I believe it's called Hollywood Beautification, Doing Business as Los Angeles Beautification. So this must be a gift from Mr. O'Farrell's group. This is a 501(c)(3) who are supported by Englander, Knobi and Allen, Waste Management, and many other lobbyists. So I must say, it's worrisome that our local group didn't get some of that money. Maybe they did. And item number, I believe it's 30, you exhausted my items, sir, because you wouldn't let me speak on 19, so I'm going to. Item number 19, which is a proposal, which I appreciate, to advance some of our investment into the homelessness crisis. It's important that we invest on the right side of that, which is to provide some service. Think Chrisless, Mr. Bonin. As you know, people who are living on the street are not doing so by choice, generally speaking, and need someplace to put their stuff. Think about the cops who are working overtime at libraries and say to themselves, they don't need a cop here, they need a psychiatrist. Let's find some way to make the homeless population less homeless. Let's find a way to get the billionaires who are constantly tugging on their sleeves for politics to provide some permanent supportive housing once and for all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we're gonna, we're gonna vote on the following items. We've taken public comment on all these items. It's items 21, 26, 27, 29, 32, 33, 34, 36, 37, and 38. Would you like me to repeat that? Items 21, 26, 27, 29, 32, 33, 34, 36, 37, and 38. Do you have all those? Okay, comment, public comment has now closed on these items, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you.
And Madam President, there are requests to send the following items forthwith, 20, 26, 27, and 32.
Without objection, that will be the order. Let's move on to item number one. Item number one, I have two cards, Yolanda Gonzalez, item 1G. Are you here? Someone, Yolanda Gonzalez, are you here for item 1G? I don't see that person. We will continue this item for two weeks on item 1G. Madam Clerk, that puts us at October 25th for item 1G. We also have another card, Stanley Kimmel. Stanley Kimmel for item 1G. That person is also not here. And like stated before, this item will be continued for two weeks. That's October 25th.
And Madam President, there are also requests to continue 1H to November 9th and 1I to October 25th.
Without objection, that will be the order. Okay, Madam Clerk, so it's vote on the balance on item one. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Madam Clerk, there's been a request to send item two forthwith for Mr. Englander. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to item number four. And I have a number of cards from Alex Davis for item four, item five, six, 23, and 47. Alex Davis, are you here?
Madam President, would you like to take all the items together? That would be items four, five, six, 22, 23, 35, and 47.
Yes. We can take those items together. Can we give them three minutes? Is that okay with you, Mr. Davis? Thank you very much, and thank you for your patience. Dion?
And Madam President, item number six is a fair hearing matter, requiring the council members' heightened attention to the speaker at the podium or at the monitors at their desks.
Good morning.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Alex Davis. I'm with the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA, and we are proud to be here in support of the Paramount project on behalf of our 400 local businesses and nonprofits. We support the project for many reasons, namely because it's a job-producing plan. The plan will ensure that Hollywood will remain an entertainment capital, not only for California but for the entire country. As a business advocacy organization, we recognize the many benefits this will bring to LA. The project will provide nearly 20,000 jobs throughout Los Angeles. During construction alone, the Hollywood project will create over $1 billion in economic output and sustain over 7,000 jobs. Operation of the new and updated studio space will maintain over $3 billion annually in economic output, which is important for the region, and provide over 12,000 local jobs. Our economy needs projects like this to ensure and create entertainment jobs in Hollywood. We're proud to be here today in support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. That concludes common cards on those items. Madam Clerk, let's, let's vote on the following items, items four, five, six, 23, and 47.
Madam President, for the record, there is an amending motion that has been distributed on items four, five, six, 22, and 23. The vote for that item should be separate from the other items.
Madam Clerk, I have the following cards for the following items. Beth Doris for item 22, 23, 35, and 47.
Good morning. I represent the appellant and the tentative tract map appeal as well. My name's Beth Doris. The project essentially hands over an inchoate envelope of development rights without normal city and neighborhood council review. In exchange for this, the city is getting millions of dollars paid by the developer under the development agreement. It is inappropriate for the city to sell its land use authority in this manner to enrich a powerful player and landowner. It is even worse when the landowner, Paramount, is using the project to divvy up the main lot of the Paramount Studios into pieces that it can then sell off at a profit, thanks to all of these entitlements. Now, the building and safety, building health and safety of the city provided a Rule 38 response. It is not in the record that we saw provided by the city clerk's office, and we would appreciate knowing all aspects of the mitigations that were deemed unenforceable initially and why those concerns were addressed in specific. There also is no information anywhere in the process on how the project is going to meet emergency drought regulations. Water consumption would dramatically increase in this project. It is not addressed at all. Thank you.
The next speaker on item 22, 23, 35... The next speaker on item twenty-two, twenty-three, thirty-five, and forty-seven is Kathy Semonic.
Good morning. Hi, I'm a fourteen-year resident of Larchmont Village, block captain on the Larchmont Village Neighborhood Association, and also on the steering committee for the Larchmont Heights Just, we're asking for some consideration in the placement of the one hundred and fifty-foot structure, which luckily, we got that down from two hundred and forty feet. However, in doing the survey for our area, most of the homes are single-story homes, so that would be about a height of two, twenty-five feet with a building of a hundred and fifty feet looming, towering, casting large shadows over these one-story homes. Perhaps there's a better position. There were three designated possibilities for location of this building. To us, it makes more sense to congregate the more industrial-looking buildings toward the Raleigh industrial area already. Just looking to try to keep and preserve the quaint charm and character of our historic neighborhood that has been much treasured and long-sought after. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on item twenty-two and twenty-three is Doug Haynes.
Good afternoon, my name is Doug Haynes. First off, I'd like to thank Paramount Studios on behalf of Hollywood Studios for the Neighborhood Council for doing very extensive outreach to our neighborhood council and also to the community. However, I want to raise a few issues that, as a member of this community, I've been concerned about with this project. First off, as I said before, this is really an office park development, it's not a studio development. There's only twenty-one thousand square feet of additional soundstage space that's being incorporated within this project, while there's one point two seven three million square feet increase in office space. The greater increase in retail is to eighty-nine thousand square feet. As someone who's worked in the film industry since the late eighties, good jobs come from soundstages, they don't come from office parks. Also, an office park would radically change the cohesion between the community and Paramount Studios, which is a great asset to this community. It creates a much different dynamic. The second thing is the concern about the land use exchange, where Paramount Studios is basically allowed by this agreement to go in and change the square footage as long as it's consistent. So instead of abiding by a set project that is required by CEQA, where you have a finite project description, we don't know what the project will be, because it can be altered at any point. I also would want to point out, as far as the development agreement, it spans twenty-two years, but it's only nine million dollars. I'll point out that the parent company paid its two top executives one hundred and ten million dollars last year. That was the number two and three highest-paid executives in the United States, and yet only nine million dollars over twenty-two years. Five million is that being taken by CD thirteen for undefined intersection mitigation right off the top, while the neighborhood intrusion funds are only five hundred thousand dollars for an area that's approximately a hundred and twenty-one neighborhood street segments from Sunset Boulevard to Melrose Avenue and Vine New Western. I would call that mitigation illusionary, because the onus is upon the neighbors to sign up for all those mitigation programs. The funds will not provide any mitigation otherwise. Also, if you want a real public benefit, as someone who's been in the film industry since I came out here in the late eighties, it would be a guarantee that all TV and film production at Paramount Studios be under an IA contract, and all post-production be in California. That's a real asset to our community, and I would ask, and I would have wished, that our councilman had actually negotiated something like that, because that's something that would have benefited this city for years to come. Thank you very much.
Okay, I have cards for item twenty-two. If you can please line up as soon as I call your name. Tim Allen, I think the last name's Allen. Tim, are you here? From the Hancock Park Homeowners Association, anyone here by that name? I don't see anyone. Sharon Kaiser, Alicia Witsling, and John Howland, can you please line up? And Ed Duffy, Mr. Duffy, are you here? John, Don Easy, Mr. Easy, are you here? Chuck Cortez, Mayo Flynn, and Chris Hannan. You have one minute, please come forward. Hello?
Hello, thank you, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Two minutes each. Go ahead.
Sharon Kaiser from Paramount Pictures, I'll be very quick. The project before you represents our twenty-five-year master plan that preserves our rich history at Paramount Pictures while allowing us to modernize our facilities for the future. I'm proud to say this product is, this is a product of extensive research and conversation with our neighbors, with businesses in our neighborhood, with the preservation community, and with our union and guild colleagues. Our goal is to preserve our studio's historic fabric and keep jobs in Hollywood in a way that's respectful to our neighbors, and we ask for your support. Thank you so much.
Hi, Alicia Witsling with the LA Area Chamber of Commerce, on behalf of our over sixteen hundred organizations and the six hundred and fifty thousand employees in the region that we represent, here to offer our strong support for the project and its investment in Hollywood and the region's entertainment industry. Maintaining a strong entertainment industry is vital to the LA's region and to its economy. It's Calif, in California, the motion picture and television industry contributes seventeen billion in wages, including production and distribution-related jobs. Paramount's Hollywood project, which represents a seven hundred million investment in LA, will create new jobs and allow the studio to grow and adapt to changing technology to ensure a strong future. For over a hundred years, Paramount has led the way in filmmaking, and today, it remains one of the last major studios headquartered in LA. Its twenty-five-year plan will preserve its legacy in Hollywood and enhance the studio, enhance its studio operations with new soundstages, office space, and high-tech film and television production facilities necessary to compete in this global entertainment market. We welcome this long-term project's contribution to the job growth and to city revenue. It is expected to result in three point one billion dollars in economic output annually for the region, and projected capital improvements are expected to create nearly seven thousand three hundred jobs during construction and twelve thousand six hundred jobs during operations. For these reasons, we support Paramount Pictures' application for a master plan approval, and we hope that you consider the item today favorably. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm John Howland with the Central City Association. CCA supports the Paramount Pictures' master plan and encourages the council to approve this item and the submissions from Paramount. The entertainment industry, especially the motion picture and television filming industry is synonymous with Los Angeles. The city and the state have taken actions in the past couple of years designed to bring filming back to California and back to LA in particular, or in recent studies show these have been very successful in bringing those jobs, those high-paying jobs, back to Los Angeles. And the filming creates lots of good-paying jobs in the industry and as well the many businesses throughout the community that serves the workers and the industry. So, to make the improvements necessary to keep pace with technology and the rapidly changing needs of the industry, Paramount will invest in new soundstages, high-tech film and television production facilities, and more. The master plan will permit the studio to stay in Los Angeles. This will mean jobs. We encourage you to vote yes on all the Paramount submissions. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Ed Duffy. I'm vice president of Teamsters Local Three Ninety-Nine, who represent drivers, location managers, casting directors, and others working in the entertainment industry. Our locals strongly supports the Paramount Pictures Hollywood project in these economically competitive times for the entertainment industry in our state due to a competition we face around the globe of our work. We're glad to see that they are pouring their investment dollars in developing of the property for the future of our industry. All the unions and guilds fought hard to get the state to recognize how important it is for our livelihood to keep production and our jobs here at home where they belong. With our expanded tax incentive program, we need our infrastructure to grow and advance to support those jobs. Goes without saying that much of Southern California's economy depends on the entertainment industry. I am proud to be a part of three generations who have worked at Paramount, the Paramount Lot. My grandfather was a scenario writer in the thirties, my uncle was an assistant director in the forties and fifties, and myself a location manager there in the eighties and nineties. And it's not just the jobs for those of us in the industry, it's also the countless support companies and vendors that rely on this sector for their livelihoods. So that's why I'm here. Teamsters Local Three Ninety-Nine wants you to know that we very strongly support the project. We asked you for your approval today, so we can see the benefits of this project in the form of much-needed jobs for our members, the other guilds and union workers, and the economic benefits it holds for the local community in the future.
Good afternoon, my name is Don Easy. I'm the president of IBW Local Forty. We've had a ninety-three-year relationship with Paramount Studios in existence at the beginning of IBW Local Forty. We're here to ask for, we strongly support this, this master plan. And trying to keep up with the times that's happening here with the technology and everything that is evolving on a day-to-day basis and going into the future, they need to keep up with the other studios and the area to bring more jobs and be sufficient in the area. I personally have been a worker in the motion picture industry for almost forty years. I was seventeen when I started in the business. This provides jobs not just for high-tech people on higher levels, they would also be able to have some jobs available to those that are coming out from the lower rural areas that don't have a major education. This is why I did start myself, and one of my first jobs was at Paramount. I didn't have a technological field, I didn't have any expertise, but I was given a job at the studios. Over the years, I evolved, and I grew, and I learned, and I went back to school, and I became an electrician. And then finally, a year and a half ago, became the president of IBW Local Forty. I urge you to, and I strongly support this, this, this plan here to try to help Paramount to rebuild, regrow, and move on in the future as I think we need to in this community. And thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, my name is Chuck Cortez. I represent plasters, sculptors, and shophands in the entertainment industry. Over the years, Paramount has supported our members even prior to our inception of our local, which was in nineteen twenty-eight. So they have been strong employers of our members with good-paying jobs. Me personally, I started working at Paramount at a very young, at my twenties, which growing and learning the industry and becoming a plaster and a shophand. During those years, it has helped me become better economically for myself and for my family. These are kind of jobs that we need in the area, and I support the, the expansion plan, and the members of Local Seven Five Five also support it, to continue having good-paying jobs in Los Angeles and to bring them up economically. So, thank you.
Good afternoon, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Flynn. I am the business manager of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and I represent the members of the motion picture industry. We are in strong support of this project. Paramount has been a committed partner to Local Forty, a committed a part, a partner to the city of Los Angeles, and I feel that this project is going to be a tremendous help to everybody in the community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, honorable members of city council, my name is Chris Hannan, Los Angeles Orange County's Building Construction Trades Council, and on behalf of all one hundred and forty thousand and forty-six affiliates of the Building Trades Council, we support the Paramount Pictures project. Paramount Pictures, as you had heard by some of our, my brothers previous, has been a great employer in the area for decades here in Los Angeles. It's important to approve this capital improvement project to ensure that they be, remain a great partner in the city of Los Angeles, and on behalf of every member at the council, we support this project.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the council, my name is Hannah Bentley. I actually put my speaker card in for number five, and I apologize for making a mistake. I am here to speak to the Paramount Pictures' master plan.
Yeah, I haven't called your name yet.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure I spoke before the council.
I have your card. There's other people ahead of you. That concludes the speakers for item twenty-two. So I'm going to call another batch of speakers for, for a few other items. I just want to call Tim Allen, I think that's his last name. Again, is he here? He is not here. I have the following speakers for items nineteen, twenty-three, and five. Mello Desire on item nineteen, are you here? Are you here? Item nineteen has already been voted on. You also, you also filled out the card for item four. Nineteen has already been voted on, would you like to speak on four?
Uh, nineteen, actually.
Nineteen has already, that public comment has been satisfied in committee, so we can't speak on item nineteen anymore, but you also filled out the card for item four.
Yeah.
Okay, item four? Go ahead.
Yes. So my name is Mello Desire. I'm a filmmaker for inner-city youth, for the incarcerated, for the homeless. As far as the, the impact statement, for item four, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't think I wanted to speak on four. It was twenty-two and nineteen.
Nineteen, public comment has already been satisfied, so we're not taking public comment on that item anymore, and your card only said four and nineteen. Okay, and twenty-two. That's not what's on the card. So you meant to write number twenty-three on the card? Is that what you meant to do? Twenty-two? Twenty-two. Yes. Go ahead and speak on twenty-two.
Okay, so I've been a filmmaker for about seventeen years, but working with the disenfranchised, primarily in Skid Row, where number-one homelessness and incarceration and violence is reigning. And one thing we did find out, when there are film crews downtown LA, they do not respect the homeless, they run over their carts, they look at, down on them, and Film LA has been given permits upon permits with the constant disrespect. So I don't mind Paramount Pictures expanding, but we would like one percent of Paramount to build a state-of-the-art recording and film studio for the homeless youth that are currently residing. They are the ones that are consumers, that make films make money, music. They are the consumers, but there is nothing for them to show that they care. So we ask that, if you approve any improvements, if you add support for a major motion picture company, and they have not given at least one percent back to the community stakeholders who make them who they are, we ask you to reconsider that. Because there comes a time where there are creative geniuses, actors, dancers, performers, grips, set design, people who are qualified to be on a studio, but because the system has cut out everything, they don't give a chance. So we ask you to reconsider and give support.
Thank you. Thank you. I have the following cards for item twenty-three, Mickey Jackson, and for item five, Hannah
Hello. I want to adopt all the objections, issues, and points made about the EIR for Paramount that others have made, as well as my own, saying that these things are oversized, they are ill-conceived, they will damage the environment and the neighborhood around them. The points that are studied lack enough backup data frequently all through the EIR. And so I, I object to the adoption of the EIR, and I object to the general plan amendments in general, which the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative would address. These amendments are illegal according to the city charter. We cannot simply give one owner, one developer, willy-nilly any amendments to our city plan, or the city plan is quickly Swiss cheese, which I believe it is approaching Swiss cheese at this point. These mixed-use projects in general want These mixed-use projects in general want too many GPAs. They do not provide enough housing that is affordable to anybody really very much. The people who can afford $3,000 or $4,000 for a one- or two-bedroom apartment have no problem finding housing in the city. It's the rest of us. And I want to say that in the financial report where we talked about these mixed-use housing, and Mr. Thornburg, who gave the report, did not disclose that he is a donor to the opposition to the Neighborhood Integrity Initiative, his firm, to the tune of $11,400. And since he implicitly criticized moves like that, I think he should have disclosed that. He is employed there, I'm sorry, he's employed by them. He is not a donor, he's employed.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Hannah Bentley, item 5.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. I'm Hannah Bentley. I actually wanted my comments to go to all of the Paramount Pictures Master Plan items, and I apologize for not putting that on my speaker card. I brought to the city council 35 copies of a report that we'd like distributed. This is analysis of the traffic impact analysis that was done for the EIR. And basically, our traffic expert found, and I'm speaking on behalf of the SoCal Environmental Justice Alliance today, our traffic expert found that the mitigations were not adequately phased in to actually address the impacts of the project, and also that out of 81 cumulative projects, the traffic impact analysis only studied eight. So we don't think that the CEQA compliance is adequate, and we appreciate your looking at our materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes cards on all of these items. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, just want to state for the record, despite what you just heard, there is nothing illegal, and there is nothing even lacking in what we're about to vote on. Just want to state that for the record, and if anyone has any questions, we do have City Attorney's Office here to answer any questions you may have. What we have is a very well-thought-out agreement that has been hashed out over the years with so many community meetings, I can't even count them all, outreach efforts, et cetera. And what we're doing with this vote today is we are sending a signal that a major thriving studio, the last major studio in the 13th District in the heart of Hollywood, can thrive, grow, and evolve right alongside with the residential community surrounding it. And what we will do with this vote today is we will send a signal that not only do we support our signature industry in word, but we support our signature industry indeed. And that's a very important signal to send, since the industry does employ 500,000 people directly and indirectly in the county of Los Angeles. So today, colleagues, it's a very exciting milestone for Paramount Pictures Corporation. As I mentioned, the longest operating and only remaining major studio in Hollywood. It has grown considerably over the years to 60 acres, located within my district, one of our major employers, key stakeholders, and very active community partners. The improvements outlined in the specific plan will enable Paramount to remain competitive and keep Hollywood in Hollywood, so that Paramount can continue to serve as the production site for thousands of celebrated movies, television shows, and commercials in the coming decades, indeed, because their production is up, and they've accepted television shows that have returned from out of state, that actually employ some of my constituents, and probably constituents that we all have and represent. These improvements that we're approving today will generate nearly 20,000 jobs and billions of dollars in annual economic output over a number of decades. Over the last year, my office has worked closely with Paramount to refine the scope of the specific plan to balance the needs of the studio with the needs of the community. The scale and size of the improvements have been significantly modified due to community input. We've also worked closely to assemble a package of community benefits as detailed in the development agreement, which include over $7.2 million that will fund improvements like streetscape improvements around the studio, childcare, parking mitigations, while investing significant resources to maintain historic structures on the Paramount Lot, including the RKO Globe. So colleagues, this is not an either-or proposition, this is an all-in proposition that is going to improve our local economy in the coming decades. The on-and-off-site improvements detailed in the specific plan, the EIR, and the development agreement will not only bring jobs and economic activity to the city, but will also enhance the project site and surrounding community by investing hundreds of millions of dollars worth of improvements. We look forward to seeing these improvements come to fruition and continuing to partner with Paramount Pictures to improve the community. So what we have before us today is adoption of the general plan amendment and zone change, two, code amendment for the creation of the Paramount Project-specific plan in the code, a denial of the tentative tract map appeal, four, development agreement ordinance between the city and Paramount Pictures Corporation, and five, Paramount Pictures-specific plan ordinance. I strongly ask for your "aye" vote. And as I mentioned, the journey that got us to this day has been so thoughtful, so thorough, and purposely delayed at times because we wanted to get the project just right. And your vote today will demonstrate confidence and validation of that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. That concludes, members on the Q. Madam Clerk, we're going to open the roll on the following items, 4, 5, 6, 22, and 23 as amended.
And for the record, motion, the amending motion has been distributed and circulated for council's consideration and posted on the board.
Okay, great. So again, the items before us, members, are items 4, 5, 6, 22, and 23. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
All items pass.
As amended.
As amended, correct. Madam Clerk, let's note that item 35 will be not in file. And let's open the roll on item 47. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Okay, that item passes as well. Madam Clerk, let's reconsider item 33 for ordinance.
4, item 3, correct. And the first vote is for reconsideration?
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Yes. Item is now before us, item 3, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Madam Clerk, let's reconsider item 11.
The first vote is on reconsideration.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Mr. Price has an amendment on item 11, sir.
Madam President, I'd like to move approval of this item with the amended to include the name of Ken Phillips from the Valley Economic Alliance. His name was omitted from the original motion.
Okay, as amended, that item is now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Okay, that item passes as well. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Okay, members, are there any announcements? Mr... Okay, I see no announcements. Can we please rise for adjourned motions? Can we all please stand, including the audience, for adjourned motions, please? If you're going to exit, please do it quietly. Our council guests, if you're going to remain in council chambers, we're about to do adjourned motions. I either need you to stay, or please quietly exit the back of the chambers. I'm going to start on my left, Mr. Buzcaino.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, the San Pedro community suffered a significant loss, surprising loss, shocking loss, recently. Johnny Delgado, I ask that we adjourn in memory of John Delgado Jr., lifelong resident of San Pedro, passed away on September 20th. He attended San Pedro High School and went to graduate, ran on to graduate, LA Harbor College, deeply involved in the San Pedro youth community, served on the school site councils, park advisory boards, board of trustees, president of the Central Neighborhood Council, co-founder of the San Pedro Youth Sports Association, and participated in his church as a youth leader. Johnny was a loving husband and father, very active as well in preserving block field to ensure that our kids had a safe and active park space as well. He is survived by his loving wife Gina, father to Angelina, John, Paul, and Joseph. Very loved and admired, will greatly be missed. I had an opportunity, and it was a blessed opportunity to share the debate stage with John when we ran for the seat. And there, he shared with residents of the 15th Council District his love and passion for service and his want to help improve the quality of life for the people of the 15th Council District. So John Delgado, significant loss to our community, may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Englander?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, it's saddened that I ask that we adjourn in memory of Sergeant Steve Owen. October 5, 2016, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department suffered a tremendous loss. 53-year-old Sergeant Steve Owen served 29 years with the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department. A veteran, was responding to a residential burglary call in Lancaster, where he was shot by a suspect on active parole. Despite being rushed to the hospital by fellow deputies, Owen succumbed to his wounds, surrounded by his entire family. Sergeant Owen was more than, as we've learned, a community hero, commonly known to the youth as Coach Owen. He spent his time serving the community as a paraclete high school parent, football coach, and mentor to young people in the Antelope Valley. His time off, he also taught landlords and local business owners how to reduce crime on their own properties. He was a legendary law enforcement officer, loved by everybody who knew him. In fact, it was just a... I'll leave it at that. I've received quite a few phone calls from friends that live out there, and as you all know, I spent a lot of time out there recently, and everybody knew him. He'd become sort of that town sheriff of small towns that Lancaster has come to enjoy, having that feeling when they have a local sheriff, and he was that person that everybody went to, respected and admired. And Sergeant Owen received recognition for his heroism throughout his career, including receiving the Medal of Valor in 2014, the department's highest honor for performing an act of great bravery above and beyond the call of duty in serving the life, saving the life of a hostage being held at gunpoint in a car while placing his own life at risk. Steve represented the best among us, and he defended the public even to the end. Sergeant Owen is survived by his wife Tanya, an LASD arson explosives unit detective, his son Chad and Brandon, stepdaughter Shannon, and his wife, I'm sorry, his mother Millie. Memorial service for Owen will be held on Thursday, this Thursday, October 13th, and while it will not be open to the general public. I would expect there will be a tremendous turnout. The Los Angeles County Professional Peace Officers Association has also set up a GoFundMe page for he and his family at GoFundMe.com/SteveOwen. I ask that, and I know and I want to thank Mayor Garcetti for flying our flag at half-staff upon this, and ask that we adjourn in his memory.
Thank you, Mr. Englander.
I have just one more.
Do you have to follow our rules, otherwise you get out of the chambers, please? Have her stand, Madam President?
Well, it's for those that are able, but... Today, I also ask that we adjourn in memory of Gerald Skip Joseph Smith Jr. Gerald Joseph Smith, or Skip, as they call him, was born on June 17, 1960, to Gerald and Mary Smith of San Antonio, Texas. Skip was a longtime resident of the Antelope Valley, graduating high school from Desert High and Edwards Air Force Base. On September 11, 1982, he married his wife Karen Ann Smith in Lancaster, and Skip was an employee of SoCal Edison for 32 years. He formed many friendships and valued his relationships with coworkers. He was an amazing man, husband, father, grandfather, brother, uncle, and friend to many. He was adventurous, lively, loved to talk and share his stories, and enjoyed life to the fullest. Unfortunately, on September 30, tragedy struck. He was a troublesman, or a first responder for the utility company, and he was fixing a power box on Avenue K when a black BMW 740, driving at an unknown rate of speed, jumped the curb, crashed through a tree, tore down the utility pole, and fatally injured Skip. He's survived by his wife Karen Smith, daughter Candace Marie Farrell Smith, and her husband Matthew, son Gerald Joseph Smith, and his wife Brittany Smith, their sons, their grandsons, Kenneth James and his wife Brianna Smith, sister Kathy and her husband Jose, family along with many extended family. He's truly loved. It was on September 30, by the way, that the first responder on the scene for Skip was Sergeant Steve Owen. So they're together, and may they rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Anyone else on my left? Seeing none on my right? Any adjourned motions? But I believe, Mr. O'Farrell, you had an announcement? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We can end this council on an up note of hope, optimism, and giving, when it's been a very, very dark couple of days here with all that's happened locally with public safety officials. We can, I'd like to highlight the great works of Ronald McDonald House Charities, Los Angeles, and acknowledge Julie Brooks, who's the executive director here with us today, and just let you know that the Day of Change Celebration from the Ronald McDonald House Charities celebrates the 42nd anniversary of the first Ronald McDonald House, which opened in Philadelphia on October 15, 1974. The first flagship RMHC house was built on Sunset in my district and was inspired by a Los Angeles native and USC football great Fred Hill, whose daughter had leukemia. Thanks to the generosity of some local operators and McDonald's owner-operators, houses were built in areas of most need, such as in walking distance to major pediatric hubs like Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. So in 1980, the Los Angeles house opened with just 16 rooms on Fountain Avenue, just one block from the hospital. Ronald McDonald House Los Angeles House Program has expanded twice and is now one of the world's largest houses, offering housing and support services for up to 75 families every night regardless of income or ability to pay for anything. The house serves over 2,400 families each year and has hosted close to 40,000 families since first opening its doors in 1980. Almost three-quarters of the guests are low-income, seeking specialty care for pediatric cancers, heart disease, or neonatal treatments. In fact, they're largely volunteer-driven, with local residents contributing over 12,000 volunteer hours each year. So colleagues, please join me in congratulating the Ronald McDonald House Charities for their wonderful work celebrating 42 years, and I encourage anyone to go by and visit the great things that they do for children who desperately need it. We love what you do and celebrate what you do, and congratulate them on 42 years. Thank you, colleagues.
Any other announcements, members? Seeing none, our meeting adjourned.